I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, on behalf of the Planning Commission, let me welcome you to our Planning Commission meeting for November 11, 2025. For those of you that haven't been with us in the past, our standard procedure is to look to our consultants, our planner and our engineer for an overview of the application, look to the applicant for comments that they have. Through that process, the Planning Commissioners often ask questions and we'll bring it back to the table, deliberate, make a decision. And that's how we'll operate. Our first item is an administrative item, which is to review and approve the minutes from our last meeting on October 14. So, are there any comments on this? I have one, I have two changes in here, if you're going to make a motion to approve.
I shall wait.
Pardon me?
I shall wait.
What I noticed, Amy, in the, this is on the first page on High Oak. It says the property has two front yards, and then it goes into what those are. Really, it has three front yards. And it should say, then the last sentence should say, or the second to last, "The property has three front yards located along Concord Road, High Oak Road to the east, and Long Lake Road to the north." So, if we could add that in. And so, unless there's any other changes, okay?
I shall like to make a motion that we adopt the minutes as amended here today.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, our first item is the Planning Commissioner will consider the request of the property owner at 180 High Oak for final site plan approval for a new office building.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Eric Peach with Giffords Webster, planning consultant for the city. The first item on the agenda today is for 180 High Oak Road. Again, this is for a full site plan review and approval for a commercial site plan, as well as certain items that we'll discuss that would require individual approvals as well. So, to begin, I'm just going to go over primarily what was discussed at the last meeting. I do have the full presentation at the end of the slides that we'll be showing today. So, if there's any questions or comments, concerns that we need to address that were on the previous presentation, we can do that. But primarily, what I'll be presenting is just the changes and the updates that we discussed from the last meeting. So, on the screen here shows a compilation at the top of those items that we talked about in October, that the applicant was tasked with to make revisions to or to update. And so, those are bulleted on the left-hand side of the screen. So, we have a request for no EV parking signage throughout the property, or at least on the north side, where there's the underground parking garage, as well as the surface parking that's under the building. The faux windows on the south building where the addition is, if you remember, there were areas that had like window rectangles that were with a brick surface. But what was requested for material and aesthetic was for faux windows in those locations. The rooftop mechanical screening of the existing building will show an elevation sheet that has what that material is. Material covering the exposed columns, that's been changed and updated with a new material. The loading zones, the size and the location of those, each building now has one loading zone associated with it. The rooftop patio screening has been kept on the plans, and so there was some discussion about adequate screening for that. The high oak screening of parking lot and the ramp, and then lastly, the landscape screening of the southwest property line. So, to go through some of those details, this is, the first portion of the presentation will be in regards to the EV signage. So, there will be a note on the plans that indicates no electric vehicles shall be allowed in the underground parking level or under the building in the surface parking lot. A sign shall be posted at the top of the ramp and next to the red-green traffic lights. So, what that looks like in renderings and conceptuals here is, get the pointer. So, when a car first pulls in, there's a no EV parking sign here. That applies to the surface parking underneath the building. And then, as a vehicle enters the down ramp, there will be another sign posted next to the lights that indicate whether a car should stop or go. And then, in this image, you can also see where that's located. So, moving on to the second point would be that all areas of the ramp under the ground, or underground parking area will be smooth poured concrete. There was some discussion at the last commission meeting about what that material would be. The applicant's here and can discuss that more. However, that's been identified as just a smooth concrete finish that leads down to the underground parking garage. These are the windows or the rectangles that primarily were brick with the previous application. Those have been changed to a faux window, even though there's, there will not be an actual window in that location. So, in regards to the screening of the new mechanical units on top of the existing building, the Planning Commission had suggested the color of that material, the five-foot screening panel, be of a darker color, or something that would match the limestone color of the trim here, or a darker color maybe to match the awning on the lower level there. So, that discussion can be continued today with the applicant, but the applicant is here and prepared to determine an appropriate color that would be sufficient for that. Moving on to the columns, the previous discussion was that the columns seemed simple and didn't quite match the rest of the building. And so, what's proposed now is a covering in Indiana limestone. So, the purpose of these next few photos, we'll want to focus on these areas here. Again, those are newly covered in Indiana limestone is the material. And these images showing what that would look like from different perspectives. This column here. And then, moving on to the loading zones. So, the north building, which is the new building, has a new access off of High Oak Road. That is the proposed location of the loading zone. The dimensions of it don't meet the ordinance standard. The ordinance requires 10 by 50, and so because this is a shorter length, the proposed width, or I'm sorry, the proposed length is 25 feet. And so, as you can see here, just for dimensional concerns, it's a 25-foot width of a drive aisle to access the property. And so, there'd be plus or minus 15 feet of clearance when there was, when there would be a vehicle parked in that location. And what has been discussed is that the property would not require large vehicles. So, the delivery vehicles would be more of like UPS and FedEx, Amazon type of vehicles, smaller in scale, that would not necessarily require the full 10 by 50. So, the south building, again, which is existing at the corner of High Oak and Concord, the loading zone would be located here in front of the building. That does meet the ordinance standards highlighted in purple. But both of these loading areas, because they're in the front yard, they would require a ZBA application and consideration for approval. The property does not have a designated rear yard, and that's where loading zones are required to be. So, in any case, even if the locations were moved to a side yard, it would still require that, the loading zones would need a variance for being dimensionally placed in a different location in a front yard. This, these slides are in regards to the evergreen hedge that will be intended to screen the rooftop patio. The rooftop hedge will be six feet in height of an evergreen species. So, these images are intended to show for perspective what that height would look like from, from different perspectives. So, from the ground approaching High Oak Road from Long Lake, the corner of the building would have a vision, a review of the, of the hedge. And then, from an aerial perspective, you can see on top of the building here, the building is proposed with a green roof, but it won't be accessible to, to the employees of the building. But through this door, they'll have access to this patio, which I believe is about 600 square feet, give or take. And this is just a zoomed-in version to give perspective and some scale to trying to hide the activity behind, behind the six-foot hedge here. So, the green roof is about 4,500 square feet, and then the patio highlighted in yellow is about just under 700 square feet. And then, the green around the periphery is where the six-foot hedge will be. And so, this diagram here is to show per scale what that height would look like. And so, the applicant's here to explain a little more of what the rooftop patio would be used for. But as far as we understand, it's for the employees of the building to have access to outdoor, outdoor space. These slides relate to the view from High Oak Road. So, this is the front of the building, and so, there's been a lot of discussion about screening of this area. Behind this five-foot Hicks U hedge is a glass railing. So, there's a pedestrian walkway to get from the parking lot to the entrance of the building, right alongside of the down ramp into the ramp underneath the building. And so, to screen that, as well as the parking lot beyond, is a five-foot Hicks U hedge. And these images show from different perspectives of what that would look like. So, this is the main entrance to the building, the parking lot beyond, and then underneath the building, the ramp is behind the Hicks U hedge here. And then, this is, again, the Hicks U hedge. Here's the walkway, pedestrian walkway, and then there's a railing to protect as a barrier from the down ramp. And then, this is just to show what the parking lot looks like from behind the hedge, that is to be screened from High Oak Road. And then, again, the parking lot area under the building and behind the building to be screened from the traffic on High Oak Road. Last month, we discussed, there's an ordinance requirement that when you have an existing parking lot adjacent to a proposed parking lot, that the, the boundary is to be screened. This is just a little bit more detail with that conversation. So, this is what's proposed by the applicant in terms of a screen or a buffer. It's not a perfect parallel parking lot, but it's just to enhance the area between the two parking areas. And again, the proposal is not to construct the, the bank spaces at this point in time. So, there is an additional buffer between the parking lot that's proposed and the existing parking lot here. So, the type of species that's proposed is Tupelo, hornbeam, service berry, and then mixed in with some Viburnum and chokeberry as lower hedges along the property line. And then, the landscape plan is an item that requires Planning Commission approval, just like the overall site plan would. This is to show the northern portion of the site where the new building is proposed, outlined in red. Here, we have five Japanese zelkova trees, service berry tree here, Corinthian linden proposed along High Oak. Those are shown in the conceptual images, if we want to go back to that. Here's the five-foot Hicks U hedge, screening the building and the railing to the ramp. And then, just a few other species here, sweet spire oak. There's a bunch of existing trees. This is a dogwood, red twig dogwood hedge of 36 inches in height, to kind of provide a buffer between the parking lot and the existing property to the west. And then, there's some lower shrubs like hydrangea, and then a red bud tree here. So, lastly, this is the southern properties landscape plan. There's two big ginkgo trees proposed in the parking lot, Tupelo tree here. And then, these are just acknowledged as existing trees that add to the green belt of the southern property. So, to recap, the Planning Commission, again, requires the full overall site plan approval. But within that, there's the five separate items that require individual Planning Commission approval, that being the location and the dimension of the loading zones, the reduction in the parking, the design standards, the landscape plan, and then lastly, the landscape screening, which is this number five here between the parking lots, proposed and existing. And then, should this application be approved by the Planning Commission, it will go before the zoning board of appeals for the algebraic setback that's proposed on the new building from Long Lake Road, the minimum setback for the proposed addition, which is in the existing building, the front yard loading areas, as we discussed, and then the loading zone size being substandard. So, that concludes my presentation. As I mentioned, I do have the previous presentation. So, if there's questions or concerns about some items that weren't presented here, we can refer to the remaining slides and perhaps find a slide that has some discussion points or answers to some questions. So...
What I'm going to do is, is ask the commissioners to hold their questions until we hear from the engineer, and then ask.
Yes, we will.
Okay?
Good evening, everyone. Jamie Burton with Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark. Eric did a phenomenal job, as usual, walking through the various changes since the last Planning Commission meeting, none of which are engineering-related. If you recall, our letters, our last two letters basically detail several comments and concerns that need to be addressed as this project moves forward. But from an engineering perspective, we've gone through the parking deck, we've gone through the stormwater management, we've gone through access, et cetera, et cetera, parking. And the changes they made last time with like the ADA spaces and functionality of those were incorporated in our previous letter. So, I'm not going to waste anyone's time to recap, but happy to answer any questions. Essentially, all the changes made since the last meeting are more vertical planning in nature, and the engineering items remain the same. And so, we're good to go. But we're happy to answer any questions.
Since you're standing there...
Yes.
You've got a lot of items on your letter, Jamie, that need attention before this building is ever constructed. So, to the extent any motion is, is prepared here...
Subject to.
I think it's important that, that reference be made to all of the items that you have listed.
Yeah, subject to our letter, or even Giffords' letter would be appropriate.
Yeah, you've got more items than we normally see. So, we've got to make sure we address all of them.
Correct. And we do that for two purposes. One is to assure the Planning Commission members that we've thought these things through and intend to have them addressed in the future, but also provide the first checklist, which is a much longer process for the applicant to understand what needs to be completed before they get a green light to start. So, these are all things that we've looked at, addressed, and made sure they're identified. So, that's why they're there. But yeah, should be subject to.
My question, ADA. Do we solve that?
Yeah. So, so first, first and foremost, ADA is super critical, super important. And we look at it. And for site plan approval, we ensure, we look at those details as close as we can. To be very perfectly clear, ADA is responsibility of the applicant and then their maintenance, because you could fall out of ADA compliance, et cetera. That's not for us to decide today. So, it's really up to the applicant to do. And then, during the, during the real detailed grading, say, of the ramps or the parking areas, we get further into that to make sure that those areas can be in fact built to ADA standards, and then they ultimately are responsible for that as well. But we don't see a concern related to this building at this time that would warrant site plan concerns over ADA. I think Eric and applicant would speak to the same thing.
So, you can pass on, you can pass on a building having all the, all the proper parking, but they have parking down, right? You can't pass on...
No, yeah. So, yeah, well, there's two, there's two things. Well, the city ordinance speaks, and I'll let Eric speak to the number of parking spaces, but the city ordinance speaks to the number of required accessible, you know, handicap or ADA compliant passes. We added one, and you start looking at both buildings. I said, that's not the func, we also look at functionality. Hey, you really need to have, and that's, and that's too ADA, if you guys remember, the first, before last month, they were pushed up against the building. I'm like, that's not real accessible. So, they pulled those away. So, we try to do, look at beyond just what the city standards say, what the ADA standards say, but also look at functionality.
And you like it?
And I think we feel pretty comfortable about all that.
Okay, thank you.
Where's the size of the car that you use when you're making the diagram?
So, we don't make those diagrams. They made them. So, typically, the, so typically, you would look at fire trucks for like turn radiuses and whatnot, but also, we understand that fire trucks will park and go wherever fire trucks need to go. But they looked at delivery vehicles, they looked at loaded trucks for the southern part of the property, and then they looked at cars. Then, you don't really think of, UPS is something significantly more than that, but that's why with the parking, the loading zone, was where the loading zone is shown on the north building. But your, your dimensional standards of stalls, parking stalls, and lane widths are being met in here. So, you have a pretty good...
I'm speaking more of the underground. Is there a limit to the size car?
Yeah. So, there's a height, there's...
Turn radiuses?
Seven foot. And I'll tell you, I drive a Yukon with luggage racks on top, and I can't go into some of those parking decks.
Does it need to be a...
There is a sign, seven foot clear. There's a sign somewhere in there.
And also, the sign, the EV sign, it looks high to me. I'm sure it's, is there like a standard?
Yeah, we could work with, we can work with them when they come in for placement. And, and I would assume that we get out there and you go, wait a minute, let's, this should be shifted to see it, or it's, it's hidden behind something.
So, there's not a standard sign height?
Yes. Typically, standard sign height or warning signs if we would think about this building, or, or, you know, they can't be two feet low, and you can't, there should be a normal line of sight.
So, there's not a dictated, okay.
There's a few traffic regulations for that, that we can look into when they go in there, make sure they're not, they're useless if they're not out of normal people's vision circle. And in a car, there is certain...
Because it looks, it looks like it's at seven or eight feet. So, if a car...
Might be a little too high, yeah.
Max car is seven feet. They're not going to...
Right. So, we'll, we'll look into that, make sure those are placed accordingly.
Is that the danger? That was just if you have a plugged-in EV vehicle. You can't be an EV vehicle downstairs at all.
Yeah. So, there's no EV, no EV...
It could blow up too? Just normally just...
Yeah, it doesn't have to be charging for it to catch on fire.
Yeah. It's the battery, it's, it's, it's not, whether they catch on fire or not, it's that to put out a fire on a battery car is way more complicated than a gasoline car. So, they just don't want them anywhere in there. And I don't think there's any EVs right now, except maybe the cyber semi truck that's more than seven foot tall anyways. But like a heavy SUV probably is not going to park down there. I can't park an auto deck downtown Detroit with my car. So, I understand it very well.
So, Jamie, I was driving over there the other day on a nice, clear day, and I noticed in the bank parking that they have, the space they have for bank parking, it appears to have wetlands there because those invasive, invasive species of, Dave, what is it that everybody complains about?
Frank Mities.
That's it, Craig Mities, are all in there. And that's usually in wetlands.
Well, but that's the original site's detention basin that they're replacing...
So, that's a detention basin?
Yeah. That they're replacing now with underground detention, so they can bank parking over the top of it. And so, that would not be, and it wouldn't be regulated as a wetland anyways. It's too small, and it's not near anything else. But it's a storm, that's a stormwater pocket right now.
I just noticed those things.
They can plow it over tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else for me? Be happy to answer any other questions.
Any other questions for Jamie?
Sorry, I have another one.
Yes.
So, when does a fire department sign off on the building thing? Like, when does a fire department say, hey, it's okay, this is where we'll park if there's a fire at the building. We don't need access here, or?
So, my understanding is that the fire department has already looked at this building from, from a general layout perspective.
Yeah.
And gave us one, that's where the, that's where the EV, that's where the EV thing came from.
So, they don't care, when, when they write in this thing, no semi trucks or fire trucks are expected to be entering the site. It's okay with the fire trucks, that they can't be on this, can't be on site between the buildings?
Yeah, the north, the north building is, I'm not a firefighter, Dave, you should speak better to this, but you don't block, you don't stick your trucks in where you can't maneuver, right? So, you would generally fight that from the street, right?
On the street.
The firefighters would go in. The southern building, they can pull them around the parking lot. But there is a second crack at this because the building department will have to review the building itself and the site for fire compliance under the building code. And if there's any nuance to that, then we deal with it at that time, too. This is just step one. I mean, there's going to be a bunch more reviews after this, including the fire department review.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jamie?
Here, just in case, Katie's got one more. You got one more?
Okay. About questions for Eric. So, I have some questions. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Excuse me. Eric, you, in your presentation today, you mentioned the upper hedge, and you mentioned six feet. I'm confused. Is the hedge itself six feet, or are you counting the thing that the pot, the hedge lives in as part of the six feet? And what is it that was agreed to by us in prior discussions with the applicant? Are we talking about a six-foot hedge? Are we talking about something that's six foot tall, including the vessel it sits in? Do you understand my concern?
Yes. Yeah, I understand. And I believe that what I was referencing to last time... Yes, yeah, I understand, and I believe that what I was referencing to last time was a total height of six feet, and that does include the planter. So the planter plus the hedge would be approximately six feet in height. If that's not entirely correct, and the planning commission would like to see something higher than that, something we can certainly determine today.
Because I think, and I would look to my fellow commissioners, I think we all agreed that we were looking for a six-foot hedge. So I point that out. Second question is, who was it that decided the hedge on the walkway down on the first level would be five feet? Is, is that just a number that somebody picked out of the air? Or do they, have they forgotten what the planning commission's feeling were on the matter?
Yes, great question. The original proposed height was, I think, roughly two feet. I did have an image in here, but I think I took it out because it was no longer being considered, but originally that hedge was lower at like two feet, I think. And so the concern obviously was for better screening, and so that's why a five-foot height was chosen. So that also could potentially be increased.
We didn't agree to it.
So.
But it was five feet proposed at the last meeting as well.
A five-feet hedge itself, or a five-foot hedge including the container or the facility it sits in? See, that's the difference that I'm pointing out. I think there is a difference in communication.
Okay.
And we perhaps can clarify that today.
Absolutely. So the the ground hedge, the Hicks U, that would not be in a container. So that would just be from grade up to a height of five feet, and then for the.
But it could be up to six feet.
It could be higher.
Is there any reason why it couldn't be six feet?
Uh, we can ask the applicant.
Is there an ordinance or some sort of safety concern, or flying birds, or anything that?
No, sir.
We should be concerned about?
No, it could be higher.
I see, thank you.
You're welcome. And then just to clarify and determine the appropriate height for a six-foot-high planter plus hedge, so a total height of six feet, that was the intention of the applicant coming back with revised drawings showing what six feet from, from the ground or from the rooftop would be from these different perspectives. Whoops.
You're going ahead, you're pointing, what is the, what's the height of the structure that they have? They're putting on top of this building?
The.
From the top of the building to the top of this.
Like the stairwell? Is that what you mean, like what sticks up above the roof?
And how big is that, that structure that they are proposing to put?
I believe that's an additional seven feet?
There's a seven-foot, six-foot person, so.
Well.
How high would it be?
Maybe this was seven feet. Do you know, Kevin, what the?
Seven-two, maybe.
No, it can't be seven-two, because I'm looking at people with a six-foot person. Okay, I'm measuring from, from, not the parapet, I'm measuring from the top of the building. A three-foot parapet.
How tall is the door that's on there, you know?
The door is an eight-foot door.
Let me ask you a question about this building.
Yes, yes.
That's gonna be a little maybe different than where you're heading here. So as I looked at this, and I've been unsettled about two things on this building, well, a couple of things, but one is the front elevation. I don't think there was any agreement on poles at all. I mean, there was discussion about the poles. I can remember saying at the last meeting that there were six posts at the end of the building, and I think my words were, why don't we create a wall there? Were, were those, those two posts, there used to be six there, and I said, if you put a wall there, you would obscure all the parking, or at least some of it, and so you wouldn't see it.
Is that the short, is this, is this Long Lake right here?
This looks like the south, yeah.
Uh, that's from the south side, but.
Long Lake is.
It would be from the southwest corner.
Can you give us that perspective?
So. Okay. And then on the High Oaks elevation side, I have plenty of correspondence that says, right now, there's no front elevation on the first floor of this building, which is unlike most anything we have in the city right now. And I wasn't comfortable with that, and I certainly wasn't comfortable with the painted steel posts. Now, when, when I look at the plans, what I see is the rendering is different than the plans. And we can discuss that in a minute, and maybe the architect can, can draw attention to that. But then there was discussion about the, the rooftop, the use of the rooftop terrace and creating a terrace. And I went back and I looked at the ordinance, and so right now, the allowable height of this building is 25 feet. And right now, the, the building is maxed out at 25 feet, and so.
Is that the top of the parapet?
That would be actually a little bit below the top of the parapet, I think. We're, we are maxed out at 25 feet. So that means that that building, that structure, is taller than what is permitted by ordinance. Would that be right?
The, the height of a building is measured to the, to the top of the, the last floor, so the ceiling.
Right, yep.
The rooftop, yeah, and that's 25 feet.
So, and what our ordinance says is, because I, I looked at all the buildings in the city, I, I'm not sure I can find one building, even on some of the large buildings, where we've actually got a structure like this on top of the building with a stairway going up. Most of the buildings, like most flat roof buildings, they have an access panel, and I just did sort of like a Google search of it. You can actually just look at the renderings and the plans here, but you don't see structures like this with, with a vestibule area and all that. And the ordinance says that, that if, if you wanna have, if you need some kind of structure, that the only way you can do that is with ZBA approval. So it says, there's a height exception. So if, if this vestibule is higher than what's permitted by ordinance in terms of the height limit, which is 25 feet, it says penthouse or rooftop structures for the housing of stairways require zoning board of appeals approval. And so, and this is really for use of servicing rooftop equipment. And so I, I'm just looking at this, this whole discussion about putting this building, this structure on top of this building, and not seeing any others in the city. Maybe there's some, I, I just did a random quick search and I didn't see any. And now we're creating this rooftop terrace, and I'm not sure that the, the structure can actually be placed there, if I'm reading this correctly, without ZBA approval. And I guess I'm, I'm surfacing this, because we've had this discussion, and it's still a discussion. And I think we should consider that as well. I mean, as I looked at this, I was wondering, well, how are you gonna even irrigate the plant material? And and that sort of thing. So I put that on the table in addition to the questions raised regarding the height of the vegetation surrounding this area.
So Eric, if someone's building a house, you just said that it's the top of the, ceiling of the top floor. Someone's building a house, and they wanna put a bunch of turrets around. Now, it's higher than the top ceiling. In the city of Bloemfield Hills, you just allow them to put like turrets around all, all over the top as long as it's not? Or you go to the top of your top turret?
Yeah, good question. So in the ordinance, the maximum height allowance is either to the top of a flat roof or to the midpoint of a pitched roof. So there's a different kind of gabled and the other kinds of roof styles that there are, and so those are typically to the midpoint. So we, those are more common than flat roofs for houses. So, so we always do the exercise to determine the average grade, to find the maximum thirty-foot of the house, which is typically the midpoint of the height of the roof, but there's exceptions for things like chimneys. And so those don't have a dimension associated with them, a height dimension. So that's why on some of the larger homes in the city that you'll see those large chimneys in addition to the thirty-foot maximum height limit.
Did you ever get a plan from them where they proposed having some arbitorium area up at the top, and you said you can't have it that high, or did they figure that out on their own? That they can't have anything higher than what is allowed?
No, there was never anything in addition.
They didn't submit it to you?
No, ma'am. There was essentially what you see here with the, the enclosure. Here, this enclosure here, and then the, the access to get to the roof, which I think this is associated with the elevator, perhaps, this enclosure.
It's our outdoor.
Mechanical screening, and then just the access to get to the roof. So the prior version, the first version of the plan was for this whole area to be enclosed because there was discussion over whether or not there was residential zones within 300 feet of the site, which allows for the building to be 30 feet, as opposed to the maximum required here as 25. But because there's residential zoned within 300 feet, that restricts this proposed building from being 30 to 25, which is the distance from the grade to the roof.
So when we ask the architect, how high is that building, and he tells us it's eight feet, because he's measuring from the top of the parapet, you've measured the top of the building to below the parapet, to the top of the flat roof, correct?
Yes, and those are shown.
So that, that, you, they have to give you the actual numbers to you, since I don't feel we're getting them. You have the actual top of the roof at the hot, top height, and then buildings can, then they have a three-foot parapet, and then they have an 11-foot enclosure for a now unnecessary staircase because they've decided to build a top floor, which is an outdoor floor. 11 feet. Are they giving you the actual numbers? Is it 11 feet above the top? Is it in the plans?
Yes, it's, it's, it's in the plans.
Okay, so it's 11 feet above. We have an 11-foot structure. I was on phone calls all day, so I drove around for hours. I drove around Birmingham, I drove around Bloemfield Township, I drove around Bloemfield Hills, and looked at the top of everyone's roof. I was wrong on one thing with the architect when I said putting white around your back building would look bad. It actually disappeared, right?
Black is better, right?
Yeah, yeah, black is better, except on one building on Woodward. That was it, one exception on Woodward. Black is better. Every single building I looked at had the least amount of stuff coming out of the roof. And then I started playing this game with AI, where I took, hey, what if the Kingsley comes to us and says, you know what, we have all these wedding venues, it would be really great if we could build an 11-foot structure, maybe a little bigger so we can have more elevators, and we can have a whole area for our weddings on top, and then, hey, why not the whole, why not the restaurant next to it? Why not have them have a whole nother area for their, for their banquets? And how about, how about where Little Daddy's is? What if we get one of those great bars that goes until two in the morning with a whole outdoor area for all the, all the, you know, all the, all the parties, all the college kids, kids, older kids? I drove around and I didn't see, I saw Birmingham fighting back on having anything but a brick building come up. When Albans went down, what did they approve of? A beautiful brick building. What do they have? Brick walls, so you don't see any parking. What do they have in Bloemfield Township? Every single underneath parking of old buildings that they have, they have painted dark. They don't have limestone, they don't have anything like that. And even the ugly parking structure that's in Birmingham that's behind the building that I've worked on for years, 300 Park, has big white stanchions that go up. They haven't fixed it yet, but even they have a brick wall going around, so you can't see the brick cars. So I, I researched a heck of a lot in order to come in here and say, Bloemfield Hills doesn't have, the precedent of Bloemfield Hills is we don't have big structures, we don't have any structures on the top of commercial buildings, we don't have any structures on the top of restaurants, we don't have the structures on the top of gas stations. We don't have it because this is the city of Bloemfield Hills. And when we have asked the architect many times to make these stanchions look like the rest of Bloemfield Hills and cover them with brick, we keep getting other things. We keep getting, we don't wanna put a brick wall, we don't wanna cover the stanchions. And this is the architect who fixed Art Van's parking lot that we all drove down and went, how the hell did that get built? How the hell are we looking at cars under the Art Van? He's the one who fixed it, so now it looks good for the first time. And three times now, I feel like we're just being berated to, to just accept what he's giving us, and then we're gonna be driving down Long Lake going, oh my gosh, I can't believe, I can't believe we, we just got bullied into allowing us to look at cars when no, no other city does. Even Royal Oak doesn't. That's my, that's my research.
I, I think there's, there's two issues. I guess, one is this, the rooftop area, and it's almost, I think, a good idea to separate them. With the rooftop, as I'm reading the code right now, the zoning ordinance, and I'm looking at section 24 dash 211, and by this section, if I'm looking at the plans correctly, and I, it was this morning I was looking at this, and I saw, it says rooftop height, and it's got it at 34.6. And I looked at that, and it shows the allowable main building at 25 feet, which is correct. But then it says allowable stairway roof at 34.6. And so I went back and I looked at the ordinance, and this, this vestibule or stairway area, whatever it is, is intended to service the equipment on top of the roof. And in the case that you have it, it's gotta be approved by ZBA, which would mean that it's not a self-created condition and all the criteria that go along with ZBA approvals. And so set aside, and, and those are legitimate questions about.
I know you like the ordinance, and I, and I just, I like to look.
Yeah, I just, so those are legitimate questions that you're raising about, what does that mean going forward?
Wait, Eric.
What does that mean going forward in terms of, so if we do it here, is, is a Kingsley gonna come and, and now wanna put something on their roof and say, we let them do it there, you gotta let us do it? The ordinance would require, I guess, if, as I'm reading this, because the height of this is, is 30, is 34.6, which exceeds the 25 feet, it requires ZBA approval. And that's really conditioned on the building intended to service the equipment on the roof. So there's the aesthetic issue that you've raised, Catherine. I'm looking at it from an ordinance issue. And I think we've gotta address both of those, and maybe we wait until the architect's able to discuss this when he comes up.
Can I just ask a couple of questions for clarity?
Sure.
Please.
May I please see the view from Long Lake? I feel like we see everything from High Oak and everything from the south, but can I please see the view? Is there a daytime view showing from Long Lake? If you're driving by Long Lake, what it would look like, daytime view?
Right.
I struggle to. Let me see. And can I ask the applicant, does that structure on top of the building, does it have to be 11 feet to house the? eleven feet to house the elevator? Is that-
It only, only houses the stairs, so it's just a matter of-
So, why does it need to be eleven?
Getting above the, getting above the roof and then the structure can be as small as, as small as it can from structural.
So, it has to be eleven feet high?
Might be able to be ten, eight, ten, I mean, we can make it as short as possible. We probably only need about eight-inch beams going across there, so we would want to have at least eight feet clear of the roof.
So I still don't see a view from the street. That is a heavily trafficked street.
Is this one, is it one of these a view that you could give the mayor?
I'm sorry, I-
Is any of these the view you could point out?
The, the applicant has a presentation-
Wait, I'm sorry, what, what page?
Eight-three oh five. Is that it?
I have it on the computer I can show it to you.
That would be super, thank you. And also, can you go back to that? The view, the lines that show the angle of the view? Doesn't appear that any nearby houses could see the, the pink lines. Are they outlining-
Here?
Yeah, it looks like it's setback. Oh, that's not, I guess it doesn't show what I hoped it would. I was hoping you would, in an effort to support, you would show that from below you cannot see any, usually you show in an architectural drawing, you could show the sightlines from below, looking up and prove that it's-
I have a couple of other images. To me, the three dimensions is better than the side rail.
Well, it, it shows directly, like if someone's in a house on the south end, you can prove to us that they couldn't see people up there because of the angle and how far it's setback.
Three hundred feet away across the street.
Or from Long Lake. I guess that's what I'm, people driving by Long Lake, are they going to see this building and-
I think this is Long Lake, it's for an orientation that-
It's still a different orientation though.
So, two considerations with respect to your question, Commissioner. One is, directly across the street is vacant property that's zoned residential.
Across Long Lake or across High Oak?
No, it's across, across High Oak. So, someone's going to build there. So, if I own that property, I can put, actually, a building taller than this across the street. So, a house. Our, our height limit is thirty feet on a house. So, the people that are living on the second floor of that home would be looking directly at this structure on top of the building. With respect to Long Lake, Long Lake is, is high.
Right.
The property slopes down. So, if you look directly across the street from City Hall, there is, there what appears to be a one-story building? Actually, that's a two-story, that's a two-story building. When you, if you go out and look at that building right now, you see what's right on top of that roof because it's only, so-
You're right.
My, my point is, if you're on Long Lake Road, you're not going to be looking up. You're going to be looking a little, a little-
That's what I was hoping for this viewpoint.
You're going to be looking a little up, but really, it's like looking at a one-story building with a flat roof, which means the visibility of the structure is going to be much more visible.
The eleven-foot structure?
Right. But setting all that aside, it looks like there's an ordinance that requires a ZBA approval for anything taller than the twenty-five-foot height limit. And based on the plans, this is called out at thirty-four-five, which means it exceeds the twenty-five feet. And so, ZBA approval would be required. And a building like this is intended to service the rooftop appliances, the HVAC and anything else, which this is not. So you've got, you've got a bunch of things going on. And so, we can continue discussing this.
It sounds like I'm the only one who would like, I think it's a daytime thing and it's an office building, so I was thinking it, it would be okay to approve in an office building situation, people being able to enjoy the outdoors. It's not like the Kingsley where you would have weddings and outside and it'd be loud and music, I mean, but-
One could argue that that's going to create precedent though, too.
You're right.
Wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be zoning specific?
Yeah, couldn't we?
We don't have any right now, so.
In my experience, in approvals, once you, and, and everything's different, but once, and we've seen it in the city, once someone does something in one place, the next person comes in and says, "You allowed it here, why can't we do it here?" And so, to your point, it can be specific. This would require, so there's a couple of different elements here. One is an ordinance perspective, one is a design perspective, one's sort of the, the aesthetic value or consideration, the other is just the hardcore ordinance. So, this would require, if I'm reading the ordinance correctly, ZBA approval. Go ahead.
I read the ordinance, it, it looks like ZBA approval, not a variance. So, it doesn't have a height requirement, it's just asking. If it's above the twenty-five foot and it is this, this type of structure, it would require them to approve it, but it's not, it's not a variance. So it could be, if the planning commissioner were to agree this, if we catch it's any of the zoning award issues that may be a part of this.
So, usually the, the ZBA, to your point, is, is opining, giving variances off of, off of ordinances. In this language, it says ZBA approval, and up above, it talks about the height limit. Mark?
Yeah, I, I think if you're looking, I think you're referring to subsection seven of the ordinance, correct?
Yes.
The general ordinance is dealing with exceptions to the height limitation. Subsection seven provides an exception to rooftop equipment, which includes this type of a staircase enclosure. Not, it's not defined for any particular purpose, but any type of staircase, staircase enclosure. And then it's followed by what? Or, or criteria. And so it's not a variance request, but it is a decision by the ZBA applying these criteria, seven A through D one and two. That's the standards that help apply to determine whether this will qualify for an, except any, an exception from the height. So, it's not technically a variance, it's just an approval based upon criteria.
Okay. So, in any event, it does require ZBA approval, and I take your point about, it, it's, it's actually a little unclear. I read the same words and it wasn't clear to me, but. So, bottom line is, so we've got, if we tackle these issues a little separately, we've got the rooftop issue or consideration, and with respect to it, we've got the ordinance consideration, which is the height limit, and that this exceeds the height limit and it's going to require ZBA approval. And the other is the aesthetic consideration, the appearance, and that's bundled up with a couple of different items. One is, what are you going to see from the street? And across the street, you've got residential where a home could be thirty feet. And so, this would be, so that lot right there across the street, that's, that's residential, and so it's going to have a straight line view of the top of that roof. And at Long Lake, where it says East Long Lake, that's high, so you're going to be looking at basically a one-story building, so you're going to be seeing that. So, that's the aesthetic consideration with respect to the building. And then, there becomes question whether or not, because we haven't ever allowed anything like this in the city, if other applicants or other building owners will come back and now want to begin putting rooftop patios on top of their buildings, and the precedent that that sets. So, you know, the, I guess the commission, and it may be the best way to tackle this is maybe the building, there's going to be certain elements that we can collectively agree to, and others that we may, on a majority view, aren't comfortable with. And so then it becomes question of, if you want to get the building approved, whether or not the applicant's going to look at it and say, "Well, we wanted to do that, it's not all that important, and we're willing to waive this request and move forward with the rest of it." And not bundle it all into one group that, well, it doesn't pass because we've got issue with this one element. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, and the city, Mr. City Attorney, don't you have a problem with the whole idea that they're going to be putting people up on top of a roof with thirty-six-inch-high parapet, parapet? And they, they say, "Hey, don't worry, no one's going to go past the, the shrubs." I know that our fellow commissioner had asked, like, are we, is the city going to be liable for that? But do we ever allow something that's under forty-two inches for safety reasons on a, on a flat roof or a wall that they want to be accessed for the public?
It's not accessed for the public, as I understand it, it's accessed for the quarters in the building.
That's a public? No, no? That's not, oh, so no guests are going to be allowed up on, on the roof?
I'm just going by what it was presented with.
Okay.
I would also note that the area, it's not the entire rooftop area, it is enclosed with a, a one-foot planter with this five-foot hedge for a total of six feet. It's an enclosed area. And yes, there is a, forgot the exact height of the-
The OSHA?
Parapet wall, but it is a lower parapet wall.
Three feet, the architect said.
Three-foot parapet wall.
On some parts, because I can see one part is lower than that. And I thought OSHA is something that the city has to, has to take into consideration.
Whatever is built on this, this building has to be approved by our, our city building commissioner. There won't be anything built on here, nothing, or you have the planning commissioner who's there, that is not the city, not the building.
But, but, Mr. City Manager, we've wasted three hearings talking about this proposed live hedge that's going to maintain and always be green and always look pretty and not have any openings, and it's never going to be approved in this, in this instance by OSHA and standards. And then they're going to come back to us and say, "We need to have a forty-two-inch high in order to, to have a safety." And you go, and that happens way after it gets out of the planning commission. So now we have a forty-two-inch-high parapet all the way around, if not a fence. And then, what happens when these, when these green hedges turn all brown and yellow? Because they're up on a hot roof where we can barely keep our, our hedges nice and green, but with, with sprinklers going all the time. But there, it's going to look good on top of this? And we've been doing this, and it's like it's a last-minute consideration that there's some safety. And the commissioners keep asking, "What's the safety about having a rooftop thing enclosed by hedges? Why?" This is a building that has, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is a building that has all this kind of lounge area with a golf simulator? Yes? And beautiful design? You have all kinds of lounge area for your engineers, but you also want to change precedent in the city of Bloomfield Hills and, and build a eleven-foot brick structure with whatever the hedges are going to look like, in an unsafe condition on the top of this building. And again, I feel we've wasted hours talking about something that was, it is not safe in any way. We can't put a, we can't put a pool in without a forty-two-inch fence.
If, if I could, go ahead.
I think you've got, you know, you bring up a lot of good points, a lot of good concerns, and that's what your job is. And I think it might be a good idea, potentially here for the applicant to discuss it and answer some of those concerns, but at the end of the day, if the planning commissioner is not comfortable with this, it shouldn't be approved.
Okay, why don't we, can we go if I hear the applicant?
Yeah, so, let's talk about the front elevation a second.
He's going to show us in his presentation.
Yeah, he's going to show us. Why don't we let him show us?
It's not in our thing.
Well, that's fine, but I guess there's another consideration. Could we see the High Oaks? I, I guess I want to cite what we're, what we're looking at. So, when we look, here we see the, those three posts. Now, the building is, is sloping, is sloping down, and the, the height at the north end of the building, from the ground to the underside of the first floor, per the plans, is eight feet. When you look at it, the south end of the building, there's no dimension, but it looks like it's about probably twelve feet, because the grade is sloping down. Maybe, it may actually be more, it's hard to see. So, at the north end, you've got three feet of visibility between the top of the hedge and the bottom of the building. At the south end of the building, you'd have seven or eight feet.
Exposed Indian lines.
And so, here, this shows it's a straight line. And even if you accept this design, you can't build it that way with a five-foot hedge, because a five-foot hedge at the south end of the building, the gap is going to be seven feet and not three feet or five feet. It's going to be something much larger than, than what appears. And if we look at, then the plans, we're going to see that the posts don't conform to what we're seeing in the, in the renderings.
Say that again? How do the posts, what we're seeing here is not in the drawings?
It, it's not in the, if you look at the actual drawings. So, when you look at the south end of the building, can you go? Can you get the, the south, like? So, there, so there, there's, so for example, those walls, if that car is nine feet wide, maybe those walls are five feet wide. But when you look at the plans, the plans don't show that. They just show a post. So, if, if you're going to approve something-
That's a problem.
You need a plan that conforms to what the illustrations do. And even if you decide to approve this, you've still got to have a plan that conforms with, with the rendering of this. Simply put, so.
So the first time he came in, there were, there were six or so posts on the, on the, on the drawing, and he only showed three. And the explanation was, "Oh, we didn't get around to it, we didn't really get around to it." But it seems to me that this should be the only thing that they're kind of focusing on, and I'm still finding teeny little posts looking nothing like the photos.
So, anyways, so those are my, those-
I'd like to show you what you're talking about.
I can show you.
So, any more questions for Eric? If you guys would like to come up and, and address those questions?
Oh.
Oh. I'll look here first, since you were just talking about the plan. All right, so this, this is a plan, we'll look, this is the, the underground level. So you're seeing here, these are the four-foot limestone piers here, the two of them. And each of these locations are the smaller limestone piers.
Can you show me that again? I'm sorry. Can you go back? I'm sorry.
Sure, I mean, you can look at it here, they're the same plan. So there's two, two larger piers here. The smaller limestone piers are on the sides, as they're showing.
What size did you say they were?
These are roughly four feet wide here.
And how tall?
They're the full height, so they're just under eleven feet, I think, on this end, ten, eight, something like that. Because the, the site does slope down.
Sure. Four foot wide, ten, ten, and maybe up to eleven feet high posts on all three of those?
So these, this is on the far end, these as they, as they come up here, obviously, this is a little bit, a bit different grade as you come through.
Are they also four feet across?
Though or not, those are smaller, those are like sixteen inches square.
So they're still little posts.
Can you show us, and I, I didn't mark this.
That's all right, you want it on the rendering?
Yeah, no, let's, so there's a couple of different places we can look. Let's look at the plan. The, the, the plan of, of the grade.
The plan of the grades?
No, the plan at grade, the, the plan of the building, the south elevation that shows those posts.
Rendering, color rendering.
No, I'm looking at the actual plans, and then we'll get to the rendering.
Well, this, this is the, this is the floor plan above, this is, this is the outline of the floor plan above, and this is where the posts are, right here.
Where's Woodward?
No, there's an elevation.
Is that what you want, an elevation?
The side elevation of the, the south elevation of the building. And there's a, there's actually a plan, and there's a rendering. So...
Yeah, here I can...
So...
Pull up the renderings for you. Probably easier to see on the rendering.
Well, let's look at the, let's just look at this. So can you go up? Oh, maybe you go down, that's right, that's the east elevation, is that the south? Let's look at the south elevation. Okay, so here, so just above, so as I look at that, that shows these limestone posts. No, to the left? Nope.
On the brown.
Nope, nope, go up, there you go. So right where you've got that boxed in, where, where it says south elevation, and then just to the left of that, it says limestone. So my point here is, there's no dimension on that, and when you look at that, and there's, it's also in the plan, and I can't find it on the page right now, and I didn't, I, I didn't highlight it when I was looking at it.
I mean, are you talking about those two little white posts on there? Do you know how to get your thing over to there, the little white posts you're talking about?
I, I understand. What you're seeing here did not, what you're seeing here did not get revised, and that's, that's on me. But all of the, all of the renderings, all the plans are showing it correctly, this, this one.
Can you show us another plan or another rendering that shows the, or the one?
Sure, all of the plans that we looked at show it, show, show those.
No, the elevation, an elevation.
Wouldn't it be just easier to put them in the details?
Yeah, so we could see, okay, this is something feet wide, this is something...
I mean, that's what we're accustomed to see.
Okay, so here's what, here's what you're looking at here, these are those four-foot piers.
Yeah, but there's no, like, number, you didn't label them as they're four feet wide, that I could see. I mean, you told us that, but...
Okay.
I mean, we asked you to change the pillars, and so it would be normal to show us dimensions of what you're proposing.
I'm telling you, that's what they are.
And those are only sixteen inches wide, those on the High Oak side?
Correct.
But is that a, is that a rendering of something that's sixteen inches wide there? That looks more like thirty inches wide?
That looks a lot bigger than sixteen inches.
Well, you're, you're seeing, so you're seeing the, here, a detail right there.
What are we looking at?
So, that's probably about as close up as, as you can get if you look at, at these as a brick size, if you had a brick on each side of that, that would give you sixteen inches.
So can the dimensions of those be preserved in the PEA detail sheet?
Can they what, I'm sorry?
Can, can the, can the dimensions of that pillar that you just pointed to be identified in the PEA detail sheet, C 9.1, seems to be a relatively easy thing to put that in?
Can I put it in there? I'm sure we could do that.
We didn't put it in, I guess that's what we're asking.
We wouldn't normally put a pier on the civil detail sheet, but...
Except we keep asking you.
We were just asked to revise them, and that we would be looking at them, and we were concerned with the width.
I, my understanding was the concern was with the material, the paint and steel. So these are completely...
It was the, the narrowness of them as well. It was pretty clear that they just look like, you said skinny posts. So I would think if you're trying to show us how you revise them, that you would show us dimensions.
You, you said from your seat that you were going to show us what the south elevation was, it's not in any of our packets what the south elevation was. It is, it's, last week all we saw was, you can't really see the rooftop, and now we're, now we're talking about this, and we actually can see the rooftop because of how the whole property slopes, and everything's going to look like a one-story building with the stuff of rooftop.
So if you're across the street, that's...
We have some renderings in the nighttime, nighttime renderings, barely see the posts. I don't know why, we've never had nighttime renderings before. I don't know what that's, we would like a, from Woodward, is that from Woodward?
This is Long Lake.
From Long Lake, I'm very sorry, Long Lake. This is Long Lake.
This is Long Lake as you're pulling into High Oak. You're not seeing any vehicles from Long Lake.
Wait a minute.
The building next door to the right, that's the driveway that's there, where that blue car is, that's the building directly to the east. We feel that we have sufficiently met the ordinance relative to screening of vehicles. This was an open parking lot, we would have more screening than would be required for that.
Okay, you know, you say that, but right there, right in that rendering, right above there.
There we go.
Right in the rendering, see those little white posts? Those little, the white posts that you have, that you, that you, that we keep pointing out that we don't like how it looks? I don't understand why you don't, why you have, why you keep asking us to, I mean...
Ma'am, I'm not asking you to do anything, I've told you, these are limestone columns.
You are asking us, you're asking us to approve of this building. Sir?
You're seeing this, the piers in the background. I'm not trying to pull anything over on you, they're limestone piers.
And how big are they? How wide are they?
We said sixteen.
I just said they were, they were sixteen inches.
That's still, that's still, those are sixteen inch ones that we're looking at right there, those round things.
No, they're white, they're limestone.
Ma'am, I, this could be, this could be, no, this is not an old image because we have raised the hedge, so this is, this is in the model, the model is the same, it doesn't change when you rotate around the building, so.
Let me answer the question.
Let me, we, we could keep talking about this for a while. For plans, what the commission would expect is fully dimensioned plans. And here, I, I just happened, I'm looking at the rendering of what would be the, the column, if, if you go to, go through a couple more of these pictures from, from High Oak.
There's one right there.
Okay, so that, that's sixteen inches, right, supposedly? I mean, let's look at it from, from the High Oak Road.
Where would you like to see it from?
Keep going back. Okay, right there. So those look, those are the posts that are like sixteen inches?
Okay.
Okay, but then when I look at this visual depiction, this looks like it's four feet wide. And this would be, this would be, go back to that other image. So I want to sort of simplify this so we can get, sort of, get to what we want.
Okay, so I'm just, I'm going to tell you, this is the same column in the same model, it's not. So it, it may appear that way, but I'm just telling you what it is.
So with all due respect, so this image, this looks like this is about...
That's exactly the same column as you're looking at right there.
Right.
Same size.
But thi, this is actually, this is a rectangle. This looks like it's about a foot by four feet wide. This does, and this is that, and if we look at this, so the bottom line is, we do not have a dimension plan, and what, I heard what you said, that the posts on the south side are four feet wide, and the posts on the east side are sixteen inches wide. And so we can move forward with the representation about certain sizes, because what we have here, we have images on these renderings that do not agree with what's depicted on the plans. So there's two different, we have two different things, and we've got to reconcile those. And I wouldn't necessarily, I wouldn't hold up a set of, an approval for, for, because something isn't clear. We, we can draw a conclusion and document what that is. I think the larger issue is, what is the commission satisfied with, with respect to the east and the south elevation of this building? So if the commission is satisfied with what's presented in the, the rendering, even though the plans do not agree with the rendering, we can document that. The question is, are you satisfied with what you see?
The question is, why are we, why do we keep, why, why are we being forced to, to guess? And I, and I, why are we being forced to guess? I could read plans, I can look at plans, and then I can look at renderings, and I still want to know what it looks like when you're driving by Long Lake, and for some reason that's never been, never been important to put into our packet of information, of what it looks like when you drive past Long Lake.
Like, if you're parked and stopped in front of your building, because you often are, because it's always backed up there, what would it look like? I only see...
So, so I'm going to, so, so I'm going to help you, I'm going to help you out here a second.
Long Lake?
Let's, let's go, let's go back to the High Oaks view of the, no, the High Oaks view of the building.
Is that what people can build across from?
Okay, yeah, okay. So in my view, we've got some important elevations to look at. One is, how is it going to look from High Oak? And what the planning commission, in my view, should consider is what our ordinances expect. There's the aesthetic considerations, but we also need to consider about what the ordinance says. And what the ordinance says is, we shouldn't be looking at cars. And under the design standards, we have all, we've got a lot of aesthetic considerations about how does it fit into the surrounding neighborhood, and is it of quality material, and what can you see when you look into the windows? There's all those considerations in the design standards that allows us to make subjective judgments about how those items fit into the community. So strictly from an ordinance, from the review of the cars right now, you can see the cars underneath the building. I mean, it is what it is, we can see them in, in this rendering. So that's a consideration. And the planning commission just needs to wrap its arms around this. When we have other similar buildings in the city, and I'm going to use the example of the Comerica Honigman Building along Bloomfield Parkway, where they have underground parking, they have a visible parking area, but it's blocked completely by veget, by vegetation. And there's actually a wall with, with posts, with columns. So that's one condition we have. Here, we've got the visual view of cars. We've got posts that are differently dimensioned on the south side of the building, they're four feet wide, here they're sixteen inches. You know, maybe you can look at this and you can say, I can dress up these, these posts to look like, more like they are, they do on the south end of the building. I don't know, I'm just throwing ideas out, but we need to get comfortable with the south, with the east side of the building. You're also going to see it from, do you have the view from the southeast corner? So then we've got this view. So, yes, sir?
Can I ask a question? I almost saw the south side as a four-foot wide pillars, and I, I agree, the representation here, those look like more like two-foot pillars, sixteen, I mean, they look bigger than...
Plus, yeah. They look at least thirty inches.
I don't know, I think what you're trying to get at is, if those were four feet, is that something that is acceptable, or is it something that, is it something that needs to be more robust?
So Dave, those are some of the, you know, I have my own personal views, and I'm not going to put my personal views out there right now. I've expressed them over the last six months about some of this. I want the planning commission, I mean, we can nuance, we can talk about this for hours.
The reason I'm bringing it up is because the, the south, I mean, I'm just talking from my own perspective, the south ones, four feet, looks like we're getting what, where the discussion was before. Is that something that they can do on that east side of the building?
That's a consideration. I mean, last meeting, I proposed, where those two posts are, create a wall there, and then you don't see any of that. So I mean, there's a...
I second that.
And I don't want...
I personally am fine with the, the four-foot, four-foot, but I still think those, those don't look sixteen inches, and there is no image matching...
Right, they look more like two or...
What the actual dimensions are that you're proposing.
Well, he said they were sixteen inches. So, but you're saying...
I'm saying I don't, my...
I don't want to get past the discrepancy of the...
Right.
It's just hard to be shown in image that's inconsistent.
So what I'm trying to drive at is, right now we've got plans that don't match the renderings. And so I'm looking at the commissioners and saying, what is it that you want? Because right, right now, the plans don't meet the, meet the renderings anyway, so it, so we can, we can document what we want, and he can fix it. That's where I'm headed with that. So...
Can I say something that you can do, is put wider pillars, much wider?
Okay. Yes, of course, anything can be done. The idea is not to create a lower-level wall underneath this building. You're, this, I, I don't understand how you can equate this with buildings that you drive under. If this was a surface parking lot, you'd be seeing, you'd be seeing cars. If you look at the other side of the street, you see nothing but cars, you have a two-foot hedge. You're going to see, you, you don't look at this building in elevation, as you move around the building, you're going to see parking lot. I see a car over there, but when you're looking on the east side, that white car is screened by the hedge. It, you, you, you can't only look at a building in elevation. From Long Lake Road, you see no vehicles, but yet as you drive down High Oak, you're going to get different views of this site. but yet, as you drive down High Oak, you're gonna get different views of this site. I could put a solid wall where those two four-foot piers are, and I'm still gonna see the red car, and I'm still gonna see the white car, because the white car doesn't have anything to do with the building, it's in the parking lot.
But it would block it.
It won't block it.
I wouldn't see it.
To put things in perspective. So, this commission approved a building on this site with no variances. And there was, there was parking beneath the building, and the whole building was enclosed.
Okay.
So, this building can be constructed, it, there were, there's approved plans that show this. This building, the parking was below the building, and it was all walls. So you, so we didn't see any of this. It was, it was, in fact, I, I shared that image, those plans, with you during the subcommittee review of this building.
I'm well aware of the building, and I'm, and I don't understand honestly how it's even relevant, because I'm looking at buildings all around this site, and they're nothing but open parking lots. You're, it's not like you're never gonna see a car, even if you did that. I, I don't understand that. I really don't.
I have a question.
Well, the green hedge is very helpful. I, I appreciate the green hedge.
How tall is the hedge?
It's gotta be...
It's a five-foot hedge from the, from the sidewalk.
Would it be level to the horizon? Or does that slope there? In other words, you follow it, I know you know it'd be there.
I'm sorry.
Is the hedge level to the horizon? In other words, does it follow the slope five feet? That distance between the top of the hedge and the bottom of the building would stay constant?
It, it really should be taller than five feet at the end of it, because our preference would be to have it follow the building line. I mean...
Exactly.
And so, if you did that, it would need to be, based on sort of my quick look at this, it'd have to be, those would have to be seven or, they'd have to be actually eight or nine feet tall.
Eight or nine feet.
It would be quite that high.
At this point, because that's something that I, I wasn't here last week, or last week, last time. But, so, if you look at the, these renderings are, I'm not saying potentially misleading, but they are. So here, the grass in front of it looks fairly level. If you go to the prior image, you, yeah, there. So the slope of the road is quite dramatic. And when you follow the hedge, it's sort of an optical illusion, I think, because it's, it's all five feet, and it's, there's about, whatever that width is from the top of the hedge to the building at the north side, it can't be the same distance at the south side that the hedge is five feet uniform, because it slopes down. So, you know...
It doesn't match, though.
It's impossible to have...
It's here.
The bottom line is, we've provided a five-foot hedge, was, which is what we were instructed to do. It's, it's more than what's required by the ordinance to screen this. If this was a surface lot, if this building can sit there, and that was a surface lot, you'd be seeing, you'd be seeing cars to the left, you see cars as you drive by. If I turn one hundred and eighty degrees behind me, I'm looking at fifteen or twenty cars that have no screening.
So we have...
I think we've done a really good job at doing that.
Cars underneath the building.
Yeah, we don't want cars underneath the building. So we have design standards and the ordinance. Were you, was that made available to you to understand? That the commissioners are bound by design standards, and we can, we can tell you, we want a brick, we want a wall enclosing the parking. It isn't about not, us not seeing cars. When you see an old building, they do their best to make sure that you don't see the parking underneath, because they can't take down the building. But this is a brand-new building. We get to impose our design standards to look like the other buildings in the, in the area. And the other buildings in the area look like, I don't know, on that whole area on the way to Woodward, was that Concord or something? They look like mansions of sorts. They look like brick mansions, they have limestone, they're brick mansions. And then, for some reason, you don't want to enclose the parking here with a brick structure, or a limestone structure, or a brick with limestone structure. So, we're going to see, and if we had a brick structure going across and enclosing the parking, you wouldn't see those cars in the back. You keep saying we're gonna see the cars in the back. You see less cars from the place that people would have their residences if you had a lower level to this building, which is what we've been asking you. And you want a light building, and we're telling you that when it's part residential, and we have the, we have the ordinance behind us to impose design standards to look like other buildings, not exactly like other buildings, but other buildings in the city of Bloomfield Hills, we would like to have your parking lot enclosed. We would like to have a lower level of that, of that building. If you don't want to do that, I, I don't, I don't know how some of us can sign on to that. I don't know if you have enough votes for us to sign on to that. Because, that's what, that looks like a old building.
If the green hedge was...
Eight foot high on the one end?
Well, if it followed the line of the building, I'm fine with the green hedge.
To the, to the horizon, just make it to the horizon. Trim it to the horizon. What do you think the gap is between, on the, on the, the gap is between the hedge and the building?
I believe it's a little bit more than eight feet to the underside at the low level, so probably three, slightly over three feet.
So could you maintain three feet all the way to the left?
Sure.
To me, that would solve your horizon issue.
How about this? Can we have the rendering of what the back of the red car looks like when people are driving up that street? So no hedge can, can, no hedge can cover up, no hedge can cover up all, everyone looking at all the parking behind, because he didn't want to enclose the bottom part of the building. No hedge can enclose that. This is, this is a drive, this is on my, on my side here. Well, is this, uh, people's homes on this side?
There's no homes.
It's an aesthetic thing. He wants it to look floating, it's his architectural...
Yeah, and, 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 and that's fine for maybe another city, but we don't have floating cities. We don't have floating buildings in the city of Bloomfield Hills, because we don't want to look at parking lots. We don't want to look at parked cars, and we don't need to look at parked cars.
Let me, let me summarize a little bit of what I just heard. So, question was raised, I, I think Commissioner Hostler raised the question about the sloping grade and the fact that the south end of the building, if you, there's, the distance between the grade in the underside of the building is, is much greater than it is at the north end. And so, the distance at the north end is probably about three feet. I think I heard you say between the, using a five-foot hedge is, is, is three feet. I think it might be more than that, based on my look at the plans, but it might be a little bit more. But, you could install a hedge where you maintained that, that whatever designated amount of space is required to screen the parking. So you can do that.
Yes.
Okay? There's a question about whether or not there's anything you can do on the building from this point of view. Because it's residential across the street, so is there anything that you can do on this side of the building that's gonna obscure what we're looking at right from this point of view?
No.
I, I just, I don't quite understand why, this doesn't all make, really make sense to me, because you're, you have surface parking lot around this building. You're still gonna, you're still gonna see cars on the surface parking lot. That has nothing to do with the building or any of the other screening. So, I mean, you're gonna see cars on this site. It's not a, there's no possible way to not see cars on this site. And then you're gonna drive around the corner to the south building, and you're gonna see cars in that parking lot, just as you see them now in that existing parking lot.
So, but my question is, is there anything that you can do on the south end of the building to soften the appearance of what we're looking at right here? I mean, I can look at this right now, and one thing you could do is, you could connect those two four, those two four-foot walls. And that's going to obscure everything you're looking at from this angle. And I think it's probably more distinct if you get a little bit further south on the street. So, you could do that. I can look at the area between those posts, and it looks like there's a curb there or something. That could be a planting area. I think, is it, is it in their room, right there?
No, there's not, I'm sorry.
What is?
This is a stair that goes down, their parking is right up to that curb.
There's a park, that goes down?
Yes, there's a stairway that comes out.
I thought it's in that, I thought it's in that building that's next to it. The, the, I thought...
There's also a stair up there.
I thought there was a stairway in the center. I thought the stairway is in...
There's a secondary stairway right here that comes out of that.
Oh, I, I was under the impression that the stairway is here, in, in, in here.
No, that stairway does not go down.
This doesn't go down?
Correct, it goes to the surface parking lot.
Where does this door go?
So this is the, the stair area here. So this, this comes out to the lot. Comes out to the lot. So there's part, so here's that stair that comes from down below, and there's a stair here that's on the other end. If you look at this plan, this goes into the building. This comes across here.
So, so, do you see what I'm pointing to?
Uh-huh.
So, what's in this area? I thought this was the stairway that's, that is depicted on the lower level. I thought that was that stairway right there. No, to, to the south. No, down, nope.
It is not.
This is south, there you go.
That's the stairway you're looking at in that rendering that we were just talking about. In the rendering we were looking at, where you're talking about, these are the two four-foot limestone piers here.
Okay.
This is that area that had the curb around it.
So, what's in this area right here? Isn't there a stairway in here too?
There's a stairway that goes up from the parking level, from the surface parking level.
So this stairway goes to the building upstairs?
For the surface parking.
To the second floor?
Correct.
So, you've got the entry here.
There's also an entry there, yes.
So...
So you come across here where you see this, this hatched area? So that's against the building, so you would walk from the parking lot. You can go into the main entry, or you can go up in the stair that's here. Or you can come up the sidewalk here from these parking spaces down here.
Why did, why is this door on this side of the building? Can you put it on the other side of the building?
It can be on either side.
Can you put the stairway in here? I mean, it's, it almost seems like you'd want the same stairway going from the lower, from the underground parking up to the, to the ground level?
No, because the, because the underground parking goes directly into the building. The secondary stair is really just for an additional egress point.
Okay, well, this all goes back to my suggestion that you put some kind of green vegetation in there, and you're saying you can't...
I don't really have any room to do that.
Because you need another staircase.
I mean, this is all, this is all paving area here, so I don't really have room to put green there. So we're fully screening along this side here. We're screening along this side here. I could look at Eric's...
A residence is right over there, Chairman? Where it says district minimum, north side, is that where residences can be built?
That's vacant land.
Yes, but are, can residences be built there?
Yes.
So, every time the architect tells me, don't worry about that, there are no residences. Residences are gonna be built there. And what we're getting from the architect is, I'm sorry, I just...
This is residential land right here.
Yes, so residences are gonna be built there. We don't normally have residences and commercial buildings next to each other, and when we do, we have conflict. Other cities like Royal Oak have it every block, which is why their ordinances are a lot more, well, they're just, it's a, it's a, it's a bible. Because residences shouldn't have to look at your open staircase and your four-foot pillars and your cars.
This is an existing building, office building right here in a parking lot.
So, at three hundred Park, Woodward, as we're driving down, there are parked cars, but there's a wall. And pillars, and limestone pillars. At three ninety Park, there's a wall and, and soldier pillars going around. At the, at the former Albans, which is now the office building, they put a brick wall there so people driving on Woodward don't have to see parked cars. These are just things that cities do to cut down in the amount of cars that they're seeing. And you're asking us as planning commissioners and mayors to do something different, because you just want a lighter building.
I grew up in a really contemporary architect's grandfather, father, brother, all of them. Very contemporary, did a lot of archi, a lot of office buildings, city buildings. I, I can appreciate, this is not what they would build, but I can appreciate this architect, this is his style. He wants the building to look floating. Is that what you're trying to achieve? Is the building is kind of floating? But, it, it's still, in my mind, still gotta look like something, it's standing on something. So I like, I don't mind, I like the limestone personally. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not a traditional, um, red brick kind of gal, but I appreciate all kinds of architecture, but I'm just trying to point out that there are different kinds of architecture. I think he's trying to go for a contemporary aesthetic. And yes, it's unfortunate that there are residents next door, but when they build there, they're gonna know they're next to, they're zone next to an office building. So, I don't, I don't, I, I see what you're trying to say, but I, I don't have a problem with, I, as long as that green hedge goes across, I don't have a problem with the fact that when you, when you look in the entrance, that you see some cars. I mean, you're just, that's the fact of being next to an office building. And then there's that office building across the street that's a very traditional home turned into an office building. And, you know, you do see cars there. So I, I don't think it's fair to penalize him in, in that regard. But I, I understand your different viewpoint, but I, I think his architecture is such that those four-foot wide pillars and the limestone, I'm fine with. I'm, I'm not, I'm not confident that those pillars seen in the, in the visual, any of the drawings, are sixteen inches. I think they look, they should be beefier. That's just my own opinion, but...
Okay, does anyone else have comment right now? I'm gonna go back to my question. Is there anything on the south side of the building that you can do to soften the appearance? Where those columns are? If, so, if you were to tell me, so, I'm getting, I'm trying to get comfortable with what you have, personally. I'm comfortable if, if we have a guarantee that that distance between the underside of the building and the top of the hedge, and the hedge would have to, by our agreement, always have to be in place. If it, if it ever died out, or if we ever saw a car, you'd almost have to put in a double row of hedges, since that's such an important criteria, at least for some of the people here.
Well, I think Mr. Sessin would certainly want the hedge to stay at...
But I'm just trying to bring this down to some point where we can come to agreement so we can move this along.
Absolutely agree with your comment. Yes, we can make that level across.
So you can do that. And would have to agree that this is, maybe it's a, it's an offset installation of HICs IUs that are whatever height they need to be so that we're not gonna see through it. But then you just have the south end. If you were to tell me, if, if, if it turned out that that wasn't that stairway, and you could have put in something matching on that small section Um, but then you just have the south end, if you were to tell me, if, if, if it turned out that that wasn't that stairway, and you could have put in something matching on that small section where those posts are, and you would say, oh yeah, we can put in vegetation right there, that softens up the, the south side of the building? That would actually almost get me over the hurdle here. I, is, so is there anything you can do, if you go back to that picture, to soften up the south side of the building? Because, um, to Mayor's point, there are differences in style, and we all have to appreciate these, these differences in style. So when we look at that, um, you know, it's, 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 it's not, it's not softened. If, if you were to be able to put at where that wall is, no, I'm, go back to, you know where I'm, no, 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 you're there, well, wherever those, in that, that, you'll.
What is your, I'm sorry, what are you looking?
Between those posts. It's hard, no, you're there, yeah, if, if you were able to put in some kind of green there that matched the high oak side, um, I'd feel better. But there's nothing you can do to soften that up, right? Cause there's no room there?
I don't have the dimension.
And you can't put, you, that stairway doesn't go inside that, you can't put the stairway inside that building.
Can't put the stairway inside.
The stairway coming from the underground, I would almost think from a safety point of view, uh, for protection, that you would almost want that stairway inside that building, so it's. So it's not accessible, uh, for a whole lot of reasons, I would, since this is a private parking area, I would almost think that you'd want it inside that building.
Well, we have it, we have it on this end for a couple of reasons, one, it's farther away from the building entrance, so you have exits on opposite ends of, of that lower level, so we want something that's on, on this end. Secondly, that probably is never, hardly ever gonna get used, it would be more of an egress point, uh, cause bill, the people are gonna be going into the building when they're driving down underneath. Someone could come up here if they needed to, if there was, let's say, a fire down there and you couldn't get into the building, you can get out this end of the parking lot.
What's the wall you have around there? What's that?
It's a glass.
It's glass? Okay, so that's gonna be a glass wall.
What's that, what are those stairs gonna look like going down? Is that just gonna be like, like, uh, steel tread on, on?
They'll be, no, they would be a, they would be a concrete stair that would go down. I mean, no one's seeing the stair or the ramp or any of those things from the road.
It's the only thing you see when you walk into the building, if you park in any of those places, you're gonna walk right by that. But, so, there's nothing you can do to soften up that, and that stairway is.
I don't physically have the dimension, I, I'm not opposed to having something green there, but I don't have the room to do it.
Would you want that brick instead of glass? Would that soften it? Like, match the brick that's up above and make that, would that soften it? For you all? The glass, I think, is gonna look dirty and ugly after a while.
Well, and actually, what I'm looking at, Susan, is you're gonna look right down and, what's, how are, how are the walls finished on the stairways? That, that's gonna be just raw concrete too, right?
It will be smooth-finished concrete.
Yeah, I call that raw concrete, so, um, it's gonna look really utility, it, it's gonna have a utility look to it, you're gonna be looking down a narrow, wha- what is that stairway about, four feet wide? You're gonna be looking at that, it's just gonna be a concrete walls on both sides, and you're gonna have the glass around. I guess to your point, Susan, that could almost be a possibility, not that we're gonna design that at this point, but, um, I guess I didn't realize those were stairs, I thought the stairs were inside the building.
Well, I didn't realize that was glass, I mean, in the winter and flowing and everything, that's just gonna look. I would make, I'd, I, I think stopping in it.
So I'm, so the east side, I guess I'm hearing, um, Tom's comfortable with, with three feet, I think, uh, Mayor's comfortable with three feet. Um, Catherine, I don't think it's happy with three feet.
No, we're not comfortable with that.
Um, um, do you have an opinion?
I mean, three feet gap between the type of hedges, yeah, is, you know, following it.
Yeah, okay, so, so you, so you get, you're making, we're making headway, um, the south end, I, I'm, I guess I'm just not comfortable with that stairway right now in, in those columns. I think we can get over the hurdle of the width of these columns. Someone asked the question whether or not you can make those columns on the east side of the building wider? Can you or not?
I can't make them wider in the east-west direction, I, you can make them wider in the north-south direction, I guess.
Why is that?
Cause I don't have the space. I can't go into the ramp.
Okay, I get, but you can make them north-south, right? Is that what you said? You can make them wider when you're looking at it from the east?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we look at the south, can we look at the Long Lake view of this again?
Uh, that's one Long Lake view. That's one Long Lake view. That's one Long Lake view. I guess those are the three that I have.
You hold it on that one. So, um, in our design aesthetics, we, you have, um, we can look inside that building, we can drive by and look inside that building at nighttime, and it will be lit up? I mean, as architect you thought of that.
Uh, there's glass there, if it's lit, it's lit, yes.
Okay, so what do, what do, what are people looking at when they're driving by this building with the glass on this side as opposed to the, uh?
Well, the, the white band that you see below the two figure, the gentleman standing in there?
Yeah.
That is back, um, at the, at the edge of the parking lot, that's where that line is, that's not up against the glass. So that's a two-story space, it's about, it's about fifteen feet in or so.
Oh, so you don't see anything, there are no cubicles or anything along those lines that you're looking at from the, uh, from Long Lake?
We have to leave though.
Yeah, you really, you really wouldn't see.
The one, who, I don't know who wants to.
The old Avery building.
Old Avery building?
Yeah, yeah.
It's all glass, and they have cubicles and things like that, they can have it, the only thing they cannot do is have your computer screen on with the name of the company in there, so you, there's a signage, you can't do that.
This is all the trees that you're proposing to cover this side of, of, of the building from? Or, or your rendering's not accurate?
This rendering's been changed so many times, the landscape plan is, is the correct plan, there might be a less tree or something here, this is, the rendering is for visual understanding of, of the concept of the building. These aren't the exact tree species, I don't have, I don't have something that does that.
This is all we have to go on, you didn't label the pillars with, in the drawing.
I'm just saying, this.
So you're telling us.
This isn't, this may not be the exact tree that's on the landscape plan at this point.
Do you, do you not have anyone in your office who can do accurate rendering, renderings of, of, of what you are, of what you are building right now? Like, uh, employment issue, that you can't, when you come in here in one month's time, you can't give us, I mean, we don't even have anything in our packet that showed us this view. So, we didn't have anything when we're looking at this to figure out what exactly was, what exactly did the landscape look like? And I'm sorry you haven't been to other planning commission meetings where, where architects have to do this, landscape architects have to show us everything that we're looking at, when, every tree that we're looking at, when we're trying to approve of a building. They don't get to give us inaccurate measurements of posts or columns or walls, or show us, or make, have a make-believe hedge that looks like it's covering all of the posts, but actually it's not, unless it's eight or nine feet high, they don't get away with that. But you keep getting angrier and angrier with us for you not having someone in your office, or you, who didn't think it was important to give us accurate renderings of what it looks like, so we can make a decision.
So, i- if, if we can summarize then some of the points we got here, um, um, I wanna get back to these elevations, um, yes.
Could I ask the architect one question?
Sure.
Cause I've been relatively quiet. Um, looking at what we're on the screen now, if, I, I think we're on Long Lake, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Can you see into the, the parking garage through that glass? What is it that you see underneath those peop- those figures? What do you see?
Okay, you, you can see, those are these right here, this.
Yes, what precisely is that?
That's the columns that are on the other side.
The other side of what?
That's the columns that we've been talking about along the hedge.
On the east side of?
Oh, that's glass that looks through that?
Yes.
Is that right?
That's, that's what I'm trying to see, what is that glass, what are you looking through? What are we looking at?
So, this is the vestibule that's underneath, you walk up from the right-hand side, Long Lake Road is out here.
That's not helpful.
This section is, this section is two-story above where this desk is sitting right there. You see it kinda juts back here, so that's an opening, that's, that's that two-story area, so this line right here is where that man was standing, right there. So that's, that's set, that's set back, so there's, the receptionist.
So you're looking at the receptionist, not the parking garage? Is that correct?
I, I don't think you're gonna see anything out there, you're certainly not gonna see cars, but you're seeing the top of a column there, yes.
What I'm trying to get at, if I'm on Long Lake, waiting patiently for the lights to change, so I can get down the street, and I look to the left, and there's enough light, am I looking into the reception area, or am I looking in somehow the garage?
This, this is the reception area right here. But you're seeing, there's glass on the backside of that.
I, I understand, I'm just trying to understand.
There's glass on the backside underneath.
So the parking is underneath this level?
This is the parking right here, we're on the parking level. We're on the main parking level.
But not the underground?
No, this is surface parking.
Right.
So Long Lake Road is, is up here.
So, let me just summarize for me, I'm sorry to, you're on Long Lake, you look to the left, what do you see?
You're on Long Lake, here's what you see. Here's what you see, this is, this is as you come in, if you're, if you're, if you're familiar with how high oak comes in off of Long Lake.
I am.
Coming in off of that corner, so this is before you just rotate around to the, to high oak, which would be on the left side of the screen. This would be, this would be Long Lake here, so you'd be coming in to high oak in that drive right there.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Nope, um.
So, can you summarize, like, where are we, and we haven't, still on this whole column piece, right? Anyway, I think you've got us comfortable there.
On the east side, um, not, I, I can't speak for everyone, but I think there's some general agreement that if the hedges, uh, are not more than three feet from the underside of the building, that there's, there's a comfort level among many of the commissioners with the east side of the building. There's still question about how wide those columns are, we can address that, but the larger issue is, um, that three-feet distance seems to be okay. The south end of the building, personally, I'm still not comfortable with it, there's that glass stairway that's going down into the, that glass barrier that's going down into the stairway, that's just this concrete structure. If there was some way to soften that, I, you know, I'm just throwing, throwing out.
If I had room on the site, I'd.
Yeah, I guess.
I'd plant something there for you.
No, I, I'm sure you would, but if you could, you could put this, I just don't understand why you can't put the stairway inside the building. I mean, nor, normally stairways are, they run up and.
Take one of his parking spots at that end.
No, it's already a staircase in there, he just didn't want to extend it.
We would like to have that stairway separated as far as possible for egress. So if there's a fire on the north end of, of the building, or the north end of the parking area, you can get out the south end. So that's the reason for that stairway.
Are you opposed to making a brick, so it's not?
I'm sorry?
Are you opposed to making that brick? It would kinda hide the.
I don't, it really doesn't fit with, I mean, with the building, I mean, it's just not, it's random, I, I mean, it just, I, I. It's just not, to, 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 to put a brick wall here, just.
Like that brick wall? Like to mash the brick wall that's around there?
What's that?
The, you mean to mash like the brick wall you have on the garbage, or the brick wall you have on the wall over here, that would stand out? It seems like it would.
Well, those aren't part of the building, they're just a trash enclosure.
What about the brick on the top part?
This here isn't even our wall.
No.
Or do you guys want it to be limestone? No, I mean, you just don't want the glass, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's just the glass, I just, yeah, it would be nice if it was limestone.
So, next to that car?
Yeah, it could be there.
That's, uh, that silver car there, so that, that enclosed area, what's in that enclosed area? Do you, do you see what?
Right here?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that box.
There's two parking spaces.
No, no, I'm saying to the left of it, to the left of the car.
That's the stairway.
Okay, that's a large, wide area. I mean, that's more than one stairway. And I just don't, I don't see it in the plan.
You're, you're just, you're seeing it on an angle, I guess, perhaps, same thing with sometimes these columns, you're looking at them on a forty-five, so they're a little bit wider.
How wide is that? That area right there?
This.
Yes, yep.
Stairway is roughly, I think, twenty-two feet, twenty-four feet.
From north to south?
Yes, and about ten feet wide.
And so it's not possible to have a stairway just drop straight down into the lower level?
We lose parking if we do that?
Well, you just move the parking place, wouldn't you?
We would lose parking spaces down below, we don't have parking in front of it above.
Is the stairway going north and south, or east and west?
It's going north and south.
Okay, so, this remains an open issue, um, let's talk about the rooftop, um, where does everyone stand with the rooftop terrace?
I'm, I'm opposed.
I would, um, I am opposed as well on the rooftop, I can't get comfortable with it, but I do have a suggestion for you. Um, so last weekend I was driving around several of our os- office buildings in the city, and several of them in the back have gotten really creative with, um, there's this one on Woodward right around the corner, the white brick building, and if you go to the back of the building, they took what would be a garden area, you know, shrubs and things like that, and they made it a, a landscape area with, with, you know, um, beautiful little garden area with tables and chairs and things like that. Why can't you take that banked parking space you have over there and kind of level that off and make it a garden area for the south building and the north building? And have that be a little outdoor area and not be on top? I can't get comfortable with the top because I do feel we will open up Pandora's Box, and everybody, and the next person who's gonna, you know, we know Little Daddy's is gonna be an office building, and they're gonna go, I want something on the rooftop too, and we would have nothing to go against, so I just think you have, you have space there, you could build a really nice outdoor area for your people.
Well, what I'm hearing, and I'll look at Salim, you know, we'll just eliminate the rooftop patio area. And, at that point, I don't see the need to, you know, we, the stair element that was going up was to, to, for maintenance of the rooftop units and the green roof area, because there's more, a little bit more work on that than just having a, a hatch, but, um, you know, that's a, that's a ZBA issue we'd have to go through if that's, if that's something that's a, you know, a huge deal, but. If we're not, if we're not bringing, if we're not bringing people up there, you know, for that patio area, then there is less, less need for that stair, it's good for the maintenance, but it's. It's good for the maintenance, but it's, you know, that was the bigger element of it.
So you would, would they still have to go in front of ZBA if they brought that stair down?
No one else has a staircase like that for maintenance.
If you brought it down, you wouldn't, they wouldn't have to go in front of the ZBA?
We just, we, you wouldn't even know, we wouldn't even bring it there, which would be gone.
So you wouldn't, that structure would disappear.
Yeah, no, just be gone. Okay, so he would, that eliminates you going to the ZBA.
Okay, so.
Yeah, that would just, we'd have to go back to, we would go to a roof hatch scenario.
So, that's Susan's view. The mayor, I think, you're comfortable with the rooftop.
I'm comfortable with the rooftop, but I still didn't see the rooftop image from Long Lake either. So it doesn't show the structure on top of the building.
So Commissioner Hauser, how do you feel?
I'm with, uh.
The straight-on one?
You don't see it, you won't see it from straight-on. That's why I went to the angle. This is the only.
No, no, no.
Well, I'm, I'm very pleased that the owner said he would be willing to just eliminate it, to create peace in the community.
Okay, and, and, Tom, do you have an opinion? I, I don't want to leave you out.
My opinion is, and I think we talked about this before, we suggested that they should put in a tall hedge. That was around the idea of having a rooftop. Now they've come back with the tall hedge. I don't see, I don't see an issue with it.
Okay. All right, but I guess at the end of the day, owner is willing to set aside that request? Okay, so, and if that gets set aside, then the, the rooftop element, in terms of the, the building, is eliminated, and any ZBA appearance is eliminated, and that sort of cleans up that whole element. We don't even have to discuss yet. Yes, sir.
Do you still have other issues to deal with?
Oh, right. No, I, yeah, I get it, Mark. I'm just, I'm trying to whittle away at these outstanding issues here. So, so that'll.
They can keep the parapets, cause they're, add to the design, right?
Yeah, the, he's not gonna.
We wouldn't be taking the parapet.
Yeah, you're just taking the building out, and.
The stairway, you wouldn't, would not be there.
Most buildings. Most buildings don't have that, so there no need, I mean, you don't need it for maintenance. You can, you'll have, so that goes away. Are there other, other issues or questions with this proposal?
The width of the pillars.
Okay, the width of the pillars.
On the east side.
On the east side of the building.
As I stated, we can increase them north-south, I can't increase them east-west.
And how, how wide would you be willing to increase them?
Wouldn't, to be honest with you, I wouldn't want them to be any wider than the ones on the south side. To me, four, to me, four feet is, it's really too wide, but I, they, they could be widened.
The city manager thought that he was looking at something that was thin this way and long that way. Is that exactly, is that what the posts look like right now?
That's what those would be, they would be narrower east-west than north-south.
The ones that we're looking at that are by the glass staircase, right now, those are four feet wide, and how deep are they?
These are the same depth, these are the same size, north-south, as the smaller ones, but they're just wider.
So.
So we're saying that we could, if, if you took this column and you rotated it, and put it on the right side of that car, that would be, it would be the same width, but it would be longer north and south.
So you don't know what the exact measurement is of how deep it is?
16 inches is what we've been talking about, so it's four feet.
You're the architect, we don't know, and we can't tell from these drawings. So you're saying it's 16 inches of this way, four feet this way?
That is correct.
And you're saying the ones that the mayor is talking about on this side?
These are the same width, we could make them longer in this direction, but not in this.
Wouldn't that just, wouldn't that match what she's asking you for, which is a four-foot wide, 16, 16 deep? Four feet, four feet wide? So she's asking you that, and you said, no, you can't do that?
I did not say I couldn't do it. I said I prefer not to, but yes, we can.
Okay, you can, cause you do have room to do that.
We have room north-south, I can't.
Well, exactly, but she's asking you, she's asking you for, they'll four feet this way, four feet this way, so they don't look like little tiny posts. And you can do that, yes?
Correct.
Okay.
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 So, we still have this glass in the stairway going down. Any other ideas of what we can do with that?
Well, the stairway needs to be there, and honestly, filling, I, I don't feel that it looks right, filling that in and making that a solid wall there. It certainly isn't gonna screen all of this parking. It's gonna do very little additional. So I guess I would ask that we be able to keep the look of this. I.
I'm fine with it.
I'm okay. He, the, the, um, owner was kind enough to hear our rooftop, and, I mean, as long as I don't have to clean that glass, I'm fine.
So, so, keeping the glass, keeping the airiness of it, the chairman had asked, can't you just put planters in front and soften that area? And the architect has said, no, we don't have any room. But up on the proposed rooftop, they had hedges that were like this wide. So you're saying that you can't put, um.
We have dimensional requirements for driveways and stuff, and I just, I, I don't physically have the dimension. I'm not against putting it there. If someone wants me, allow me to take a foot out of the drive width and put it there.
Are you saying you want like a trailing planter on top of the glass or something?
No, no, um, in, in front of the glass, keeping the glass airiness of it, cause a lot of it is looking at it from inside the building. He's trying to keep the airiness of the building. We're talking about softening it from, from this side, and the commissioner had proposed that there was some kind of, we had a hedge on this side. In fact, if we're looking at that hedge where that man is standing in the khakis, if we've talked about this, is that post that the arrow is on right now, is that actually about 11 feet high? That post, is that the one that's on the, on the angle? Yes.
Roughly.
Yes, so that's about an 11-foot-high post.
From, it's, you know, shorter than that on the curb, but.
Okay, 10-foot.
From asphalt, it would be, yes.
Okay, anyway, and then that hedge, to make it only be seen by a commissioner who wants to only see three feet of it, it's gonna be about seven, eight feet high on that end?
That would be correct.
Yeah, and so, what we're saying is to soften it, is there any ability to put planters? And if that's a variance, that one foot less of, of, of a driving spaces, it would be a pretty easy, um, um, thing to get past, uh, uh, the other committee, if you are softening an area with eight-foot hedges on this side, and you're just softening the area. You're just bringing in planters, you're bringing in some green.
You're saying you want arborvitae along there or something?
Um, it doesn't have, the, the wall is only four feet. It's a softening thing, um, I, I'm fine, I'm fine looking at your four-foot walls. I don't, at that point, you've now made, you've come in here in the third time, and you've, you, you are agreeing to what we've been asking for, which is something that's a little more substantial, which is now we have four-foot walls by 16. One, two, three, if I'm correct, or maybe that's four?
Yeah.
Two here, we're asking for that. Um, obviously the chairman, uh, doesn't think she should be softening it on this side. I, I agree. If you were able to do a one-foot planter like you were proposing on the roof, and put some soft plants, some greenery, greenery there, that would soften this side of it. And I'm wondering if you're, you would consider that? Or, or owner of building, who is developing this beautiful area, and you want it to look beautiful, would you consider that? Not there, would you consider that? Or what are your problems with that?
I own the property on full front, on the outside of the restoration hardware. And on the backside of it, I have strip about 18 inches wide, bordering the parking lot.
Yeah.
Every other year I have, I have to replace that green. It just died because of snow, not enough terrain, not enough training. So, getting greener in this side, I, I could, please you take a look at it on the, on the, on the, on other side, which is on the west side of the building. It's dying every other year.
Yeah, and we're, and we're opposed to fake plants in our city, so, um, okay, that's a good, thank you, thank you.
I see, you're doing this because this is glass all the way around there, isn't it? Well, see the guy in the khaki?
Yeah.
He's standing, he's standing next to glass, right?
Yes.
Right.
And the other way is all glass, so that's why you're bringing it all the way around?
Correct.
Okay, so.
Oh, I know one more thing. Um, sir, can you, um, can you give us what the, um, what the landscape plans would look like from the accurate landscape plans, like just understand what, what other people have done when they come in here, and you want to build this building, and I think the mayor pro temp until tonight had put forward last time, we want you to build your building, go ahead, we just have these issues. So we did that for you already. What we're asking for you to do is to show us what the landscaping would look like, the actual landscaping from all areas. Can you do that for us? Okay, thank you.
So, um, I guess we're mostly comfortable with the elevations now, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Um, east side, south side, south side's not changing, it's gonna look like this. With the east side, those hedges, can you bring that right down to the, to the parking lot?
Sure.
You can do that, right?
Sure.
So, if you look at the east elevation? So now we're gonna see.
It, it comes down probably like to here.
Yeah, so, it looks like there's another five or six feet, you can bring it.
We can bring it like this area right here.
Yeah, just bring it all the way down, um, and, so we've concluded on the posts.
Mr. Chairman, then you're gonna obscure people coming up the ramp, and the ramp people can't see. Can you leave that back at that post?
I agree.
Okay.
Sorry.
No.
I'm sitting down just.
No, you're.
No, this.
I, I think that's why it ended up stopping there, I, you're right.
Then they're gonna have to put one of those big ugly mirrors there, and then we'll be all upset about that.
All those engineers see everything.
Would you like me to make a motion?
Yes.
Are there any other, not yet, are there any other issues that you have? Have we tackled all these issues? Yes, okay.
Tom?
You good? Okay.
Okay, I'd like to propose we approve the request of property owner at 180 High Oak, with the exceptions of eliminating the rooftop building, and increasing the size of the, the pillars, the limestone, correct, pillars, to all being four feet wide,
16.
and at least 16 feet, um, deep, as viewed from the east side on High Oak, matching the south side. And to edit the hedge, so that the line of the hedge, it matches the base of the building with a maximum of three-foot gap all the way along, and that the city manager approves the land, the final landscape drawing.
It does. Can I ask you to add one thing?
You bet.
That, into perpetuity, that, that that hedge always completely screen 100% the area that it's intended to, that it be a complete, well-maintained, green hedge?
Completely screened, and that the hedge always completely screened, and, uh, all the cars, and at least the height of the cars.
Level to the hori, level to the horizon.
Level to the horizon.
Mayor, mayor? What would you like to see from the city manager for landscaping on the, on the Long Lake side?
I'd like you to add, Tom, what would you like to see?
Um, I, I would just like to see a plan that's on that, on that side. So we're, we're kind, we're approving of this, because we have the building approved, but do we approve of the, of the landscaping?
Yeah.
Of what it looks like, cause it's not accurate what they're showing us.
Can we have the city manager?
We have a landscape plan, you might, you might not have been here yet.
Yeah, I would like to. I was here all three times. Yeah, oh, the landscape plan.
I don't know where you're, I think that was yours.
When you said the removal of the rooftop.
I can find it from there.
Building, we're also including all landscaping improvements and, and all the rest. There's no improvements on the roof.
No improvements on the roof.
It was towards the.
Can we add that to the?
Here we go.
Except for, I mean, that's an important point.
Very important, no building, no 11-foot building, no hedges.
Right now, we do not have a screening plan for the hardware, the appliances that are on the roof. So, um, where is?
Yeah, that's the area behind the stair that.
Yeah, it's shown.
That would still remain on the roof.
Okay, so, that doesn't change, where is that? Can you just show us?
Hang on, I got. Right there, behind the stair, to the south of the stair.
So, so that squared in, that rectangular area, that is going to remain. Everything else is going to be eliminated.
We'll just make more green roof.
Okay, so.
And what is the material that's covering the mechanicals?
It's a zinc metal that matches the building.
So it's gonna just go up to a hatch that's on the roof?
We'll have a hatch that will come out of the stair that's there.
Right, so.
Would you still, were you gonna put, you're gonna put astroturf up, up on the, on the roof?
It's not ast, it's live, it's a live roof.
So is that, is that gonna be accessible to pedestrians walking around up there?
No, it, no.
No, it's just your typical.
It was never meant to, people were never meant to be outside of the hedge row there.
Do you mow the roof?
No, it's natural grow.
Okay, so you've got the stair going up to a hatch, and the only thing that's really gonna be visible is the screen that is around the air conditioning unit.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Amy, do you mind reading that back? Sorry. I just want to make sure the chairman's comfortable with it.
The only thing under the roof is, you want all the conditions or just about the rooftop? The other three were.
The pillars are four feet wide by?
pillars are four feet wide, remove all the rooftop equipment, or all the rooftop. Um, the hedge will remain continuously three feet gap between the top of the hedge and the building. Pillars will be limestone, four feet by 16 inches. The city manager will approve the landscape plan, into perpetuity the hedge will remain completely screened 100% to the level of horizon.
Great, any other, chairman, you would like any other?
No, I think.
Great.
So.
And the ZBA.
Oh, and, yeah, go ahead.
Don't forget there is other conditions, well, the ZBA variances that were required. I think there was conversation about approval of the EV signage, height of it, with the center engineering.
Right.
And subject to the, the engineering?
Jamie indicated that.
And the engineer's letter of October 3rd, it's 1.5 should be addressed.
What is that all about?
With their gizels.
Oh, all the issues they have.
Can you, can you use a sign in the city that says no EV cars that looks nice?
No, that one looks.
I mean, can you?
Tell me, what do you want to look?
No, you just need to have people not park there.
Yeah, we just.
You can make your own sign that make, look, looks nice.
Is that like a standard sign, Jamie?
Because it's for your employees, right?
Well, he is a big-time traffic engineer, has, I mean, if we're gonna do it right, let's do it right, let's walk black and gold.
Yeah.
Okay, based on, okay, subject to approval.
Yeah, that's fine.
It can't be this, this big, otherwise it can't be that big.
Right.
He is a.
It's gotta be black and gold.
We were, we were more giving you, this is where we would suggest that it goes.
Yes. We're gonna make it look nicer.
We're happy to work with them on color and size and description, however you want it to be.
City manager and HRC.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So.
Great.
You've been through this a couple of times. Thanks, uh, for coming in front of us. We just want to make sure that whatever is built in the city confirms, and we look forward to your, your project.
Excellent. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Just for your information, my OSHA, the OSHA department, you have to be within 10 feet away from the derpit, no, no one in the garage. You have to be within ten feet away from the parapet, no, no, in the garbage.
If you can keep people away from, uh, leaving and going onto the green space? Oh yeah, you have that.
The OSHA requirement, as long as you are away from, away from a parapet, nothing is needed.
Is there gonna be?
We have to have a parapet.
I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing your building.
Thank you.
On a, a long li- on a, a Big Beaver too.
Well, I was trying to do a nice place, zero net zero carbon, keep the carbon in the ground, not bring it out. Having a green roof that would be pleasant for the employee to go and have lunch.
It's impressive.
All your buildings.
It's a green building, thank you.
So, our next item is the planning commission will consider the request of the property owner at 3376 Corton Road for grading variance to construct a new home.
Okay, our next item for consideration is 3376 Corton Road, this is a grading appeal. So I'll just give some introductory slides and also say, uh, state that we had met with the applicant on a few occasions to discuss the challenges with this site. Uh, so it is located within the A3 zoning district along the north side of Corton Road, just east of Nantucket. The challenges with the site are, uh, related to the existing grading to the northeast corner of the site. When this came in for building permit application and review, our analysis of the proposed home did meet all the ordinance standards. So we went through the standard practice of just establishing the front yard line along Corton, the two side yards in yellow, and then the rear yard, uh, in the, on the backside of the property. So, uh, with that, it's a one-story home that's proposed. I believe the floor plans show that there's a bonus room on a second story, but for the most part, it's a one level and then a basement, uh, level as well. And so then as you go around the building on the west side, um, this would be the garage that faces Corton over here. So this would be the backside of the building. And then, um, a view facing the back, so, um, again, the garage was on this side, this is the back area. And this is the area where there's challenges with the grading, that the city engineer will, um, dive into the details on that. And then the opposite side of the house, this would be the east side, um, showing the main portion here, the garage wing in this location. And again, that portion of the northeast property, uh, where there's some grading challenges. So, as I mentioned, we went through the minimum setbacks of the home, the, uh, algebraic setback analysis, everything checks out. As I mentioned, it's a somewhat lower of a home because it is, uh, just the one story, um, well, two, with the, uh, bonus addition room. And then the landscaped open space, um, they're at approximately seventy-six point four-three percent, so they're in compliance with the, uh, the seventy-five percent open space requirement. So that's an introduction to what's proposed on the lot, uh, everything meets the, uh, standards of the ordinance for building permits, except that, uh, there is a, an appeal for, um, the grading.
I'm sorry, um, Mark, I, I have to, um, say, I do live in the subdivision in Rudd Gate, but I live at the far north end, they're at the far south end, and there's like a hundred and twenty houses, so I feel I can be. Not a next door neighbor, it's not gonna affect me whatsoever. I just live in Rudd Gate.
Yeah, you've got to know, um, are you, are you a member of the association?
No. No, goodness.
Jamie Burton with HRC again, don't live anywhere near the house. Okay, uh, so, uh, first something I mentioned in, in my, uh, review letter, I made an edit last minute, and it talks about why we're here today, cuts of five and cuts of seven or something like that. It's supposed to say fills up to five, cuts up to seven, so I'm gonna clean that up a little bit, but.
No one would have, no one would have.
You noticed, you noticed, wow, I heard all about it, so yeah, you got it, okay. So why we're here today, um, I'm gonna use a pointer and, and we'll go quick, so, uh, the ranges, the applicant put together a good chart of information, which I believe is now on your desk. And so, uh, right up in here is where there's some areas of fill, they, uh, as Eric mentioned, they met with our staff, came in, they've, they've, they've done a lot. I don't wanna, I don't wanna say that they haven't listened, they haven't come in, but, but they've done some lot, they've added some walls, they've done some additional work to try to minimize this. But here, here is in the corner here, uh, the fill, the fill location. And it's really to kind of around the side of this house, as you saw in the, um, in Eric's, in the side view rendering, in this kind of location here, it's really to kind of level out across the front of the house. Bigger issue that I think is in this back where they've got, and some of the confusion a little bit is these, these shadings look really pretty, pretty good, pretty tight together. But right up in this corner is around seven feet, okay, off of existing grades through here, and it steps this way down. So, the ordinance speaks, in, in general terms speaks to, no, well, kind of specific terms, sunken patios or sunken walkouts, that would be where it's all the way around is lower, so the water's just flowing towards the house, right? Kind of like a depression, and then forced walkouts, that's making grade changes, substantial grade changes to get a walkout. So I, I, I call that, that to your attention because this will drain out, and they've added swales along this property line down to the corner. Uh, so this isn't what I would call like a sunken patio, it's just, there's seven feet, six feet, five feet, four, you know, all the way down as you work your way through, uh, to get to that spot. So we met with the applicant, the applicant, oh yeah, here's the, kind of the swales, uh, along the property line from, from a drainage perspective. The drain does, the drainage is from rear to front, so they're getting the water in and around the home. So we, we worked and we got to a spot, uh, I'm not, I don't wanna speak for the applicant, but I believe we got to a spot where going further was not something that HRC was gonna recommend approval for. We explained the options to come before you and asked for, and asked, and present their case. Uh, I think they've got a couple of comments to be made about, uh, different things, but the idea being is a seven-foot cut down to grade, uh, it really kind of pushes this into what we would define as a forced walkout. We do not want properties around the city just changing grade, eight feet, seven feet, four feet, whatever, to get a walkout or one, the grade, the current grade doesn't exist. I said that intentional because I believe you'll hear from them a little bit more about the previous house and the house ripped down in like two thousand one, two, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, around that area, I think. So, so that's why we're here today, um, Eric mentioned it meets all other requirements. This is a pure grading request, which would be for five to six, six feet of fills in the front and cuts up to seven feet in that back to create that walkout. Happy, happy to answer any of your questions, is pretty straightforward. And again, the applicant did work with us to get to this point, but it just wasn't enough for us to say this meets the ordinance.
What's allowed in cuts and what's allowed in fills without meeting?
So anything more than two feet, we, um, is kind of a slam dunk. We kind of look, it's site-specific, and what I mean by that is, um, if you just tore down your house and your basement was a bowl, right? And you took your topo and you came in and you were gonna raise that bowl up, then we would kind of, okay, let's talk about that. Anything more than four, we have a hard line, we, we bring it back to the planning commission. Any grades above two, they have to go to planning commission because it's going to planning commission for something else, we always include in that approval. Uh, but we, there is some latitude with us and administration, if there's small little areas here and there.
Those numbers are consistent between fills and cuts.
Yeah, yep, two for both ways.
If you just remember two feet.
Yeah.
Two feet cuts and fills, that's, that's all we take a look at. He, what he's saying is, if it's like a corner or something small, you know what I mean?
We don't, and we don't look inside of the, of the actual structure, you, you know, for filling the patios.
But as a rule, it's two feet.
As a rule, it's two feet. Um, and then, um, but in addition to that, it does, the ordinance speaks to no sunken patios or walkouts and no forced walkouts. So, all, that's probably the bigger concern. Yes, ma'am.
That, that property, and I don't know who he has to answer, the property, um, at, that, where, um, the magistrate said, let us just build this on this weird property and we'll build you a park in City of Bonfides? The, the Martel one, right? Where they've covered everything the way we've asked, right, that, that one? Did, because of the site-specific, did you allow them to have certain cuts and fills? When I walked around the property, it seems like they, they had a lot of cuts in order to get that, it used to just be a, an unbuildable hill.
Yeah, so there was, there was no, there was no quick pro quo with, with them on.
No, just wait, did they have cuts and fills in order to make that work on the property?
Yes, and they came before the plan, and they came before the planning commission. We treated that site specifically different than a normal home because it was more like a development, right? It was creating two lots, where it used to be four lots, they made it into one lot, they were making it two lot. We really treated that more like a development. So if you think about any detention basin in town, it's gonna be more than two feet deep. So for commercial, before you go residential, we would allow a lot of that, we'd allow more of that occur. You can't meet your own standards on your berm height, on your standards, in a, in a commercial development. We treated that site materially different than we would treat an individual. They came in, got all their approvals for all the grading cuts and fills, but we made them put in stormwater management because it was a development of two homes instead of one.
Are you opposed to this?
Um, I'd like to hear from the applicant more about what the old house used to be, and I think that's where they're gonna talk to you guys about.
Yeah, we've seen that, but when you're talking about, uh, you, you forced the other people who had to have an interesting lot like this, uh, put in storm management.
Now I'm not worried about the stormwater on this site. I would, I would lay down in front of the bus if those retaining walls touched the house and there was no way by gravity to get the wa- like a true sunken patio or bathtub, I would scream bloody murder, say you cannot do this.
But you don't see.
Now it's bad, and I'm only doing that to protect the homeowner. We've got enough of those in the city over the years that we don't wanna do that. This does grade out, but historically, historically, we have always, always, always said, do not create wa- there's walkout lots in the city that are very easy, and there's walkout lots, flat lots that shouldn't be walkouts. There are special circumstances that occur to some of those, and I think that's their argument to you, that's why we said, we brought them for you. I like it, I don't, but I will not lay down in front of that train for this one because the drainage will still work.
Will still work. See, we were looking at the house and, but we didn't have the grading at the same time, so.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
No, it drains by gravity.
Can I ask you a question here?
Yeah.
What's the difference between this and the house?
Right.
Okay.
Everything on bleeding lane.
Okay, so what caused, what caused the trouble there is what we would try to lay down in front of the train for, tie ourselves to the tree, which is, there's no gravity, natural outlet for drainage. In that case, the neighbors drainage came through the other walkout that shouldn't have been there. And that walkout was in a bigger bowl that was over like two properties, if you remember, right, kind of along the lot line. If, if we had a ten-inch rainstorm right here, the water by gravity would get down to Corton Road. Yeah, they should have, that's, yeah, yeah. But that would, that would be equivalent of, of, in that case, this is the neighbor's house, right? They had this and the neighbors graded it, and it just all, there's no way regionally to get that out on that lot, over both lots. This, the water will get down to Corton, won't impact anybody else. I, again, I think absent a compelling argument by the applicant to you guys, our recommendation is we don't do seven feet of cut for a walkout. There's always compelling reasons and that's why we're here. Yes, sir.
So in the, in that regard, uh, and I think it's important that we realize that that's sort of, that's sort of a standing rule, and when you start breaking that rule, then it becomes a real sort of difficult hurdle to get over when the next person comes over. But let me ask you.
Yes, sir.
Sometimes when you're looking at some, uh, some middle point, you might say, well, my plan is I'd like to do this, this big plan with this big walkout, but looking as, as, as I do at the variation in the grades, so you've got the red, um, that goes down to a much shallower cut area.
They're meeting ordinance by the green, essentially.
Right, so when I look at the rear elevation, so like this thing, where the, where the walkout is here, Jamie?
Yeah, I'm trying to get to something so I can follow along with this one.
That's it.
So, um, while, you know, the big wish may be to have this real wide walkout, if, if they were to move the walkout to a smaller area, so in other words, lose some of those door walls on the left-hand side?
Yep, I'm, I'm listening, it could minimize it more.
Yeah, so, you know, maybe you, you give a little bit, but not, not the whole thing. Can, did you guys intervene that kind of thing? Or is it just because I've got this lower level and I want the whole thing exposed and so I'm gonna go ask for the whole, the whole thing? But if, if they were able to just push that area.
The idea would, the idea would be, would be to have a on-grade here.
Where are the, where are those, uh, door walls?
Those door walls are back, oh, here's the door right here, it's all these windows is what you're looking at.
Okay, um, we didn't have this plan, so I wasn't sure what, and I, I was trying to figure it out when I was looking at it. So I was thinking the door walls were along, uh, the north side of the building.
So is this, I'm trying to, let me back up here, make sure I give you the right picture here.
They run north to south on the east end.
So this is, so, so, well, that was that door right there, because now we're looking at the house from the side.
Where's Corton?
Corton is to your left.
Okay, where are those other door walls then that we were just looking at? Those.
Those are.
So are there door walls then?
So there's door walls along the side that's coming from the house towards the east. The L shape, that's on the north side, this is the north elevation.
So this is the north, and the other one was the east elevation?
Right, so there's door, so there's door walls here and here.
Okay, so then to my, uh, question, so if you go back to the, uh, the, the north elevation? So there, so while we can't see them, on the right side, there are door walls here too.
Yeah, there's, there's coming out of the house this way.
So in other words, um, you could say, well, um, maybe you gotta lose some of the door walls on the right-hand side, but we're gonna let you keep a couple of these door walls? And so we're gonna minimize, even though we're not supposed to do this by ordinance, I mean it, when I say.
Well, how can we do a little bit?
Well, I can, may, may I try to, well, kind of try to tell you what I think you're saying and to explain it? If right now there's door walls here and here, but if this wall were to move down to here, and this was more like a patio at grade, right? Up top, then you could still have this door wall, you could still have a little bit of a walkout, and you wouldn't need all this cut and fill. It'd be kind of a smaller little area to get out, is that what you're trying to say?
That's the maximum cut part, that's the maximum.
Well, I'm saying you would.
But that's kind of tucked into the building corner, so it's not as.
I'm saying that you would eliminate, if there was a way to conceptually do that. You understand what I'm saying?
So you would propose giving them the walkout on the south portion of that patio where it stands?
Well, maybe on like, well, where the, where the. No, no.
Oh, here.
No, where the, where the what, where the green is and.
Oh Jamie, you didn't explain.
The green is fine, right?
I, I said just bring this across and this becomes the walkout right here, from like here to here.
Yeah.
Am I right? Well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying get rid of, so that you don't have the huge, you eliminate the red.
You won't eliminate the red back in this corner.
Well, I'm saying.
Eliminate all this red.
I'm saying you gotta sort of change the plan, you, you give them a little bit, right?
Yeah, I would just.
So they would have egress from, from the basement where the yellow is on the south end?
And right where the red is.
Oh, you're, you're saying even over to here, Walt?
Can you show us a picture of it, um, of what, so that they can see?
Um, do, 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 let me, give me a second here, let me try to.
I'm sorry, seven feet is like the height of a story.
Yeah, no, and, and so when I look.
So the new, the new wall.
So Walt, this is looking back at the house from the dangerous angle, this grade would move in this way.
Yes, to, to the point that maybe it's three or four feet.
Yeah.
And, and so, yes, so they end up having.
So either they have garden windows on this side, right, as we step down from the grade, they could actually have garden windows here.
It's almost like we would have to see how this is designed.
This could be the walkout.
So to your.
But it's still seven feet in that.
Seven feet.
So, may I ask, seven feet with that first door wall on the left?
I'm saying that you, you would, you wouldn't make that cut anymore.
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking, can I just ask one thing? So on the right, those two doors that are walking out, that's where it's a seven-foot cut.
Correct, yes.
Required, and then it's seven-foot cut probably for the next bay of windows. So you are proposing that the, the bay of windows on the far left, not the far left, but the.
The middle, yeah.
Second one over, is a doorway out?
Yeah, this could be, this could be the door, this could be the door.
I, I, what, you know, I'm not really proposing, I'm asking a question. Whether, because I'm not comfortable with, with, with this huge cut, because we don't allow anyone to do it. So if you start allowing it here, um, I'm not proposing we do that.
Okay.
Um, what I'm suggesting is, if you get down to the area where it's more three or four feet, which is those last two door walls, um.
What color is yellow, what is, on the?
I'm looking at the long, who asked you this, is you're looking at the east side?
No, I'm looking at, that's, that's.
Look, look, look the arrow up top, the arrow's pointing north.
Yeah, no, I.
So the northern elevations, they call it back here, is looking this way.
You know, may I have your point, can I have that pointer so I, you can understand what I'm saying? Yeah, no, I understand, so this is what I'm saying.
You're saying allow this to be walkout?
No.
Bill is, please, put this back to grade.
I'm saying, how does this thing work?
Bill, it's, you gotta keep it up.
Oh, there you go, okay.
You're shooting yourself, Walt, there you go.
Okay, so.
Do you wanna go up there? Got it.
Is it working?
Yeah.
It's working.
Oh, it is?
On the left.
I think.
Okay, so this is what I'm saying. So, right now there are door walls, this, okay, so right now there are door walls here, and there are door walls here. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I understand. So, um, what I'm saying, right now there's like that small wind, there's a window here, and then there are door walls along this whole thing here, and there's door walls here. I'm saying, um, allow, if they wanna put a door wall in here, uh, maybe they, maybe keep their door wall here, maybe they gotta change, if they wanna do this, maybe they gotta change their plan or something. If, I would look at this and say, if you've got a four-foot cut, uh, maybe I can live with that, maybe.
But the yellow is six.
I'm, yeah, the yellow, I mean, it's.
No, I'm.
It's a gradient, right?
Yeah, no. Yeah, I'm, I'm saying get rid of, I'm not comfortable with any of this, I'm saying this.
Yes.
Before we get too much further, I wanna remind you, this is not a plan review, this is an appeal. So let's be careful about drawing conclusions, we wanna hear from the applicant first.
Sure.
Sure.
Good point.
Sure, I.
Very good point.
An appeal.
So I'm, so with all due respect, I asked the engineer a specific question, Mark.
I understand that, I think.
So.
You should wait until we hear from the applicant.
So.
Because this is an appeal.
Yeah, we're just gonna.
Yeah, we're not gonna, let's.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah. Let's hear from the applicant.
Okay. Go for it.
Good evening. I'm Greg Bono, I'm with PEA, I'm a civil engineer, homeowners, future homeowners here with us in the Tennessee, have specific questions about the house, but, um, I guess, uh, it's, it's a little bit difficult to see with this particular image, but if you look at the, um, the topographic survey and how the, how the contours of the land, kind of form, there, there's more of a significant drop off in elevation along the eastern, or right, the right side here. So, the function of that particular cut being like literally right in the center of the house is really just because the existing ground at that exact spot is nine feet or eight and some change feet above what we're proposing, so, um, there was some discussion about the original house. It had a walkout basement on it, but I think unfortunately the, the door walls in that faced east, right, to the right, so. It would be, yeah, so the walkout faced, basically immediate side yard walkout, which is not something that they're really interested in. They want the walkout portion of their basement to be this pseudo-rear of their home, you know? So what we're, um, proposing here is just that the walkout is across the rear. I know Eric's sketch was kinda showing it, that this still kinda is technically in the side yard, but for all intents and purposes, this really is kind of the rear of the, that portion of the house there, so. And that's kind of becoming like a little bit of a, of a design element for some outdoor recreation for the kids. I, um, the homeowners interested in just having that as an area for the kids really to play. So there's, there's other areas here, but with the way the covered porch and the columns are set up and how everything kinda like overlooks that area, it's a really nice, um, value-added design feature that they've really fallen in love with, and that's why they really wanted to come here today to appeal, you know, to some of the, uh, to the ordinance requirements, and obviously a lot of the feedback we've gotten from engineers and the planners who've been great working with us, we've been at this, um, for many months. I think we originally were in, in last year, so. Um, we're kinda at this point where our, my client's really fallen in love with the design of, of what they have with this walkout feature here, and I know we're kinda, um, debating over some terminology about what a forced walkout is. I, I would, I would cons, I would consider a forced walkout is creating a walkout basement where there is no overland flow route for the grade to, water to drain overland, you know? So, w- we feel very comfortable that we have that situation, Mr. Burton obviously has pointed that out, and, um, so we're not creating, uh, any potential adverse situation for future maintenance, um, you know, flooding concerns like that. It's just the way the topography of the property is, is it drops off, you know, suddenly on the east side, and we're, we're just trying to frame that walkout to maximize some of the, um, natural light that can be entered in through the, on, you know, it's, it's, um, yeah, natural light that can come in through the basement and just kind of finish off this walkout area in a really cool way. We've tried to incorporate these landscape walls, um, to help with the transitions, and, uh, they're really excited about it. So we're, we're, we're hoping for some positive, um, feedback from you guys on this, and because we, because we, um, we're not creating, uh, a potential drainage issue, and we're trying to situate the home in the best way that we can with the, with the existing topography that's there. So, we've worked a lot with Eric, um, about the setback requirements, which relates to the amount of exposed wall face and what the setback from the property line is. So, taking a tremendous amount of that into consideration, we've really narrowed it down to just, that what I would really say is this really small area in the back here. So, um, that's the reason why we wanted to come and present our case here.
Any way of questions?
I have a comment, but no.
Go ahead.
So, I think when people purchase land in the city of Infield Hills, especially when it's vacant land, they know what they're buying. I think it's incumbent upon people when they're buying property in the city in which we all live to understand what can be built on that property within the guidelines that we provide that are public, and what can't be built on that piece of property. And if what they wanna build, and it's their dream to do that, and it can't be built on a particular piece of property, then they should look for a piece of property that will accommodate that particular. This shouldn't be our issue. I have an accountant who says, don't make your problems my problems. And this, to me, is an example of that, this is, this shouldn't be our problem, this is a problem with the piece of land. Sounds like a beautiful home, it's just a beautiful home that's not suited for this particular piece of property without some really serious accommodations that we just don't typically make.
If I could, if I could respond to that real quick, I, I definitely appreciate that, and I know as a consultant in this business, we, we have clients come to us with many interests that we try to walk them through that exact same thought process. The only, the only thing I would add to this is that my client, um, did purchase this property with the existing house there, and it, and it did have the walkout basement already. He just demolished it because he had intended eventually to construct a much nicer home on the property, and it, that, in his mind, it, it had an existing walkout basement, it had this topography, and, uh, so he, he was eventually trying to just meet the similar intent of, of what he originally had there, so. Yeah, if this was a, if this was a vacant piece of land that did not have a walkout basement previously, it mi- it might be a slightly bit of a different argument, I'll definitely agree with you on that. But he, in terms of the perception of the buyer and what he had versus, you know, what he wants to do, in, in his mind, are pretty much the same.
I'll just, by the way, that was well said. For being new on the commission, um, you know, some of us have been on the commission for a long time, and, um, we have people that come in, we, I will tell you, we have never granted an eight-foot. I can't imagine once when we did that. We, you know, what we always say is you build the house to fit the lot, you don't change the lot to fit the house. And because of that, we have, you know, rolling hills, and we have, um, you know, topography that's really different in the city, and it makes it unique, so on this one, I know they fell in love with this design, but it's, in my mind, it's too far for me to go. I don't think it's our job to engineer, or to architect, excuse me, the, this, your home, but, um, in my mind, I think you need to go revisit and get rid of these deep cuts and fills. And, and then, you know, the fact is, is that the homeowner bought the house knowing that the walkout basement was to the east, and you told us you wanna move it, well, they bought it knowing where it was, so that's just my thoughts on this.
Any other comments?
Of course, I confirm.
Yes.
You have a read of the ordinance that they held?
Sure, sure.
Seven point five dash two, brand one, advocate shell, I don't know about this, but endeavor to design improvements that fit and respect existing site conditions, including drainage, topography, water features, natural features, wetlands, woodlands, landmark trees, adjacent properties, et cetera. And then subsection two is the limitation on the two-foot, uh, cuts and fills we talked about earlier. Included in that is filling, cutting for the sake of curb appeal, forcing walkouts or garden view basement windows or to avoid additional steps between the house and garage, front walk, rear patio, et cetera, will not be permitted. So, I think it's pretty clear the ordinance does not permit this. However, there is a dedicated appeal process. So, to the earlier point that, you know, it's, it's not permitted in the ordinance, it is kind of indirectly, if you make specific findings, it can be permitted if you grant this appeal. And so, three criteria you're supposed to be applying for this. My commission shall have the power in duty to hear decide and grant or deny the request for a grading permit where the granting of the grading permit would not materially detrimental to other property owners in the vicinity. That's one. Two, any unusual conditions applying to the specific property of the applicant do not apply generally to other properties in the city. That's the second. And the third one, the strict application of the provisions of the grading ordinance would cause undue and unnecessary hardship to the applicant because of the unique or unusual condition pertaining to the specific parcel of property questioned. And the granting of the grading permit will not be contrary to the general objectives of the grading, grading ordinance. So those are the three criteria to apply. You know, I, observations could be made that, you know, you may wanna hear from, uh, the engineer again regarding particularly the third factor. But the, the intent of the ordinance, I think it's pretty clear, um, under subsection one is that, you know, the design improvements that, that in respect to existing site conditions. So there needs to be an evaluation of what the existing site conditions are. The efforts may be comply with those, and then if it meets the other criteria that I mentioned earlier, including impact on the neighbors, things of that nature.
Mark, what was the section of the ordinance you read from?
I'm reading, uh, the general gate, rating requirements, sorry, seven point five hyphen two, and then the appeal process is seven point five hyphen nine.
And, and, and I think what that says, it says it has to meet all three of those criteria, correct?
See, it actually doesn't say that, but it's implied.
So, um.
Commissioner McCarthy, um, in all of your years on this board, I'm only asking you, but anyone else can answer this?
Well, well.
Because this is way, this is kinda over my head on the whole eight-foot, and, and I didn't have this until then, so I couldn't place, I couldn't even figure this house out, I mean. Is the, is, you said we've, you've never granted an eight-foot or something that's not necessary for a, like a forced walkout in the city?
Right, I've never, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, Walt, Walt, you can speak up here, but I've never, I don't remember ever doing that.
What about you, Walt?
So, um, uh, we've granted eight-foot cuts, but they've been for specific site reasons where we needed to. So, for example, um, in Barrington, uh, you'll remember this, Jamie, that house that is on the south end of the site, there were extraordinary conditions to requiring or allowing them some latitude. But if it's purely for aesthetic purposes, and Jamie, I think you and I actually wrote that, that language. The specifics of it was, um, we shouldn't change the character of the community in the grade to fit a house design. And that was the, that's, that's what those paragraphs say, that we shouldn't do that, and we've sort of adhered to that, and, um, tho- I mean, those are the, sort of the stipulations that we followed. And if there's criteria that are necessary, like in the Barrington site, we've done that. But, uh, we don't do it for aesthetic purposes.
I think as you were, it's not for me to sell it, oh, this is a home, Mark.
If you can, I'm sorry.
Yeah, please.
Hi, Marcella Calley, uh, my husband would have been here, but there's been a lot of flight delays, and he's supposed to be here yesterday, and he's still on the flight soon to come home. We originally bought this house in 2016, moved into the neighborhood, we, we love it here, I'm part of a PTO, and very involved in the community, we have five beautiful children, we've been, um, we live on Corton, just on the opposite end towards, uh, or by Gilbert Lake currently. When we originally knocked this down, it was during COVID time, and, um, I was hoping to do all that building during that time, because it was, obviously, everybody was, you know, easygoing, and it was a lot more different, everything was done from your home. It didn't happen, prices went up, and things went up, and we just ended up waiting and waiting until it was the right time. We've been going at this for over a year now, back and forth, we've, um, we did not start with this, with this exact house, but a lot of it is similar, we've, we've made a lot of changes, trying to ease, um, you know, every time we've, we've had the meetings, we've tilted it, switched garages, done a lot of different things to, again, try and make it work. I know you said, you know, we shouldn't be building the house that we want because the lot doesn't allow it, but we did have another base. the lot doesn't allow it, but we did have another basement that was there, it was a walkout, um, it was not as large, large of a house at that time, we only had two kids, and like I said, now we have five. We're trying to, you know, build our dream house, just like everybody else is trying to live their life, build their houses, do, you know, do, to get better and progress in life, and, and, you know, um, we're just hoping to still be a part of this community. Where we live now, it's not enough for seven of us, um, we're trying to make this work so that we're not now being pushed out. It's, it's a lot, you know, obviously prices have gone up, things have changed, um, I know it's a lot in your eyes, but honestly, it's, it's just the corner, and I, I, it looks like that because it looks scary because of the coloring, but it's the corner of that piece of, literally that corner, I mean, it's not, it's not the red top eight, so we're not doing eight, we're not doing the second, is it the third? If I'm seeing that correctly with that orange color?
Here it's good, the very corner, the very corner, the worst spot is just over seven feet, like seven point one.
Six to seven, okay, so.
Seven point one, so you're gonna, just at, just that corner.
So, number three? Yeah. I know it looks scary, and I know you don't allow it, but I, if I'm, if I understand correctly, where, like in the other meetings, there was not just one, but even before going to planning commission, wasn't there a five? And don't quote me on this, but was there another property or anything that was, had to be, no?
We have, to the chairman's point earlier.
Yeah.
We, there's been approvals of a lot of different things over time, of all.
Yeah, right, every, every lot has its own, yes, yes, yes.
For different, different purposes, or different rationale, or cleaning up errors of our forefathers and so forth, but.
Yeah, I mean, we're not asking for a whole, like, even the backside, the whole backside's not, not, not being touched. What can we do besides cutting that completely out? I mean, then it's just not going to happen because it, like, it, it won't, it doesn't make sense for us to build on that, if it's not going to be something we truly love, you know? We didn't buy the plans, like, we, this is from scratch, you, you know, and then we worked to, we worked really hard to, to make it work as, as best we could.
So, um, I'm not sure if this board right now, from what I'm hearing, is comfortable with the eight foot.
Seven point five?
Yes.
I just, again, I reminded you, this is an appeal.
Right.
My, my point being, a denial is not the end of this plan, a denial is just the denial of the appeal. They continue to work with staff and the engineer, it had some input from you tonight indirectly. I just want to remind you of that, that.
Well, this is not what the engineer up there are doing, right?
Pardon me, so, excuse me, Mark. Um, what we typically do in these planning commission meetings, when we have residents come in front of us that have spent tens of thousands of dollars on their plans, um, what, what I as an individual commissioner will do, rather than walk out, let them walk out of here with a denial, I want to give her, she's asked, what's comfortable? I can't speak for everyone else on this commission, but I think it's reasonable, um, to give her, which is what I intend to do right now, um, my opinion, um, not that she's not going to, she's going to walk out of here not knowing that this was approved, that it was not approved, but she can, you've watched what we've done, as you've been on this commission for the last six months, when someone, just like the predecessor, the prior application, they were turned down for three, three times in a row, we gave them feedback, and so, I think it's important to give her some feedback so that she's not walking out of here and saying, well, I got denied, I'm not really sure what they're looking for. So, um, so.
And my point was that was done earlier in the meeting.
Well, actually, actually.
I wanted to remind you.
No, I understand, she actually, I raised some questions of the engineer to understand where the door walls were on the building, and I'm not even sure there was complete understanding about where the door walls were. Um, and she's not going to walk out of here with an approval, but she heard from one commissioner, and she knows everyone else is not comfortable with it. Um, maybe she's going to walk out of here with the impression that if you understand that there was an existing home. So, you may have to look at this and come up with some kind of abbreviated plan, and I don't know how everyone else feels about that. But on this, on the east side of the building, right now, where you have the, the green, the two to three feet, um, actually, under our ordinance, um, the city manager actually has privileges, uh, over two feet but less than four, in terms of what gets, yeah, what of what gets approved. So, I think there's some latitude here, I mean, we're, we're running pretty, pretty tight now. Um, there's some latitude, um, uh, so if you want to redesign this, you can see, people aren't comfortable with seven feet, they're not comfortable with six, maybe two or three feet. Yes?
Well, I was just going to say, I appreciate what you're saying, I, a little bit, a little bit that may be missing, and you won't hear this in the planning commission, but, you know, essentially, this just is a denial of this, uh, plan, but they haven't given a lot of feedback, and we'll continue to work with them, and we had a lot of ideas, and, and a lot of ways that you did, move the house, you know, modify this, and I don't do that, our experts, engineers do that, but I can assure you that we will work as a team to help them.
Okay.
Do we need to, do we need to either approve or deny the appeal?
Yeah.
Yeah, we need a motion to deny.
Yeah, if you don't, I mean, if I could ask, ask procedurally, so, if, is it, if we just get denied, then we have to reapply to come back, or if we make some changes, or similarly to like planning commissions where maybe we can postpone it for?
If you, if I say this wrong, let me know, Mark, but if, you get denied tonight, you know, you hurt our feelings, we don't like those deep, the deep cuts and fills, you can work, like, like, um, with Eric and with Dave, and if you're within two or three, they have the power, they have the authority, and you don't need to come back in front of us, so you're fine, you don't have to come back.
I'm okay if you come back at a five-feet thing, and I don't want you to give up on your dream home, but you are, but, but it.
So, but let, let, let me, let me answer the question. So, what we have done historically with these, uh, with these grading variances, we've allowed people to come back, we've tabled them, we've not just issued a complete denial.
But this is different.
But is that, in the ordinance, uh, if they, if we say no, if the, if the engineering administration says no, then it's an appeal process.
Yeah.
They've already said no.
This one is an appeal process, it's a little different.
So, it's, it's essentially you and I, they come back, or maybe they won't, but uh, because maybe they.
But aren't there differences in the filing fees and everything? If, if, what we've done, I thought, have we tabled, have we tabled them so that?
There is not one of those situations that they just explained, that the engineer denied, so it's a complete denial.
So, I, I guess I didn't understand that it was completely denied.
Yeah, because we feel like we were trying to work with them, uh, they want, they wanted to, they didn't essentially listen to what we recommended, and so it's, they have the ability to come here and ask for an appeal.
That's an appeal.
They were denied by the administration, they exercised their right to file this appeal, this is before this commission on appeal, a decision needs to be made and supported with the criteria I mentioned earlier. But that doesn't end the process, they're free to go back to the administration and continue to work with them, which terminates this scenario.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Ready?
Motion?
Not smart enough to make a motion.
I can't do that.
Oh, I, go ahead.
I'll, I'll do it, but I need your help, Mark. Um, I, uh, make a motion that we deny the request of the, the appeal, the appeal request from the homeowner at thirty-three seventy-six Courtin' Road for a grading variance based on, Mark, can you help me out, join the three?
Although it may not be detrimental to property owners in the vicinity, um, otherwise in the city, you have varying, um, topography, and don't try to create a walkout.
Forced walkout.
And that, that the, uh, strict application of the grading ordinance will not cause undue or unnecessary hardship, and that the granting of the permit would be contrary to the general objectives of the grading ordinance.
Thank you. You got all that, Amy? Okay, that's, I made the motion.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay.
Good luck.
Does anyone have any, uh, comments, or can we adjourn the meeting?
I think we're all set.
Okay, adjourn our meeting. Thank you.